Sandy City Council Meeting to Order, please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Councillor Peitzold.
Here.
Councillor Smallwood.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon.
Here.
Councillor Walker.
Here.
Councillor Exner.
Here.
Councillor Hokinson.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here, per our standard operating procedure, I'll go ahead and do a review for our agenda this evening. We'll first call for any changes to the agenda, we'll then go to our public comment portion of tonight's meeting. For those of you tuning in, please note that the public testimony period for the views is now closed. Public comment will be open for any other issues facing council, the council will welcome your comments at that time. There'll then be a time for our staff to respond to public comments from our last meeting. We'll then have our consent agenda, which has our city council meetings from our February 16th meeting. Under Old Business, we'll be reviewing the contract for construction manager services, general contractor services. And then we'll be continuing our public hearing on the views. From there, we'll go to our report from the city manager, followed by our committee and council reports, and then we'll adjourn for the evening. With that, is there any proposed changes to this evening's agenda? Councillor Exner?
Yeah, I'd like to be recognized at the beginning of the views to make a motion.
Okay.
That would have concerned the rest of the session.
Sounds good, we're not at time for an open hearing at that time, but I'll certainly look to recognize for question or statement or motion. Any other proposed changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll now go to public comment. Again, I'm going to note that public testimony period for the views proposal is now closed. This is a time that council welcomes your comments on other topics. Please see instructions on the agenda. If you're participating online, click the raised hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. You'll be provided three minutes and please remember to state your name and address for the record. Jeff, is there any public testimony for this evening?
Hey Mayor, I'll just wait one moment for any hands. And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands tonight.
All right, great. Jordan, I don't remember if there were public comments in our last meeting to respond to.
There was just one comment, I believe, from Ms. Linda Malone regarding going fearless during storm events for our transit department, which I think is a policy worth considering, and I think maybe council probably want to hear the transit advisory board's thoughts on that. But I think it's certainly something that, you know, we've done during COVID and other events, so something worth considering, but that was the one comment.
All right, great. Well, thank you, Jordan. And with that, we will go to the consent agenda unless there's discussion, I will entertain a motion. Or a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll move that we accept the consent agenda.
Second that.
There's a motion from Councillor Sheldon, a second from Council President Peitzold to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, a nay or a thumbs down? Motion carries. With that, we'll continue on to Old Business, Contract for Construction Manager, General Services, Contract Services. Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor. I think Mike Walker, Public Works Director, is giving the staff report and he has moved over now as a panelist. I'll just introduce this as this is the second CMGC contract the council is going to be approving for our Phase 1A of our wastewater system improvements project. So again, I think a milestone night for the council and approving, considering this contract as a CMGC contract to get moving on the improvements at our wastewater treatment facility. So I will hand it off to Mike to give the staff report and looking for your direction in motion after that. Thanks.
Thanks, Jordan. As stated in the staff report, we solicited proposals at the end of January. We had a site walkthrough with, it was attended by six potential contractors on the third of February, and then the proposals were to the 16th. We only received one proposal, Slayden Constructors of State and Oregon. We had staff, city staff, FIAO, and West Joe's and Leeway Engineering review the proposal, check references with Slayden. And it was, the evaluation process was very simple, since it's only once a bill. Their pre-construction fee and their CMGC were very competitive, and those were done, you know, those were solicited on a competitive basis. They weren't aware that they were the sole proposer when they prepared their pre-construction and CMGC fees. Slayden's done a lot of work in the Washington, on the West Coast, over the last 30 years. They built the existing treatment plant in 1997. They also expanded our water treatment plant in 2002. And we've always been very happy with their work, but they've also done some very high-profile projects around Portland Metro area, Selwood Bridge, and the Tri-Cities facility that the council visited in 2019. Even though it's disappointing that we only received one proposal, especially when we had a lot of interest initially from contractors. I think, you know, the very aggressive schedule we had may have put some contractors off. And, you know, some contract, this is a small job for CMGC. And, you know, contractors that would typically bid this would be used to doing it on a conventional design bid build basis, and they probably aren't used to the CMGC method. But one of the advantages, you know, as I state in the staff report, is speed. So, you know, we were trying to get the sweet spot between contractors that were familiar with CMGC and contractors that were, you know, large enough to handle, you know, that did, you know, three to four million dollar projects. So the one good thing about the CMGC process is Slayden does a lot of CMGC work. They've done a lot of work on facilities where they have to keep the existing facility operating during construction. And even with the sole proposal, you know, the city still has some leeway on negotiating the guaranteed maximum price for the various work packages. The way CMGC is structured, if we don't like the price that the contractor proposes, we can require them to go out and competitively bid, basically bid against themselves. Solicit bids from other contractors and other subs, so that we can determine if their initials, you know, GMP is reasonable. And so there is an opportunity to, it takes some time, but if we're not comfortable with the negotiated price, we can compel the contractor to go out and solicit bids. And, you know, we can get an idea, kind of calibrate the process and get an idea if the GMP that's been negotiated is a reasonable number. And it's, all the work is open book, so we can see what the sub bids are, what the material costs are. And so the consensus of the review team was that we go, move ahead with awarding the contract to Slayden Constructors, Inc. and State and Oregon.
Thank you, Mike. Is there any questions for staff from council? I see Councillor Hokinson.
Hey Mike, thanks. I just want to clarify, so, because I'm not totally familiar with the CMGC concept, but is this basically a type of cost-plus contracting mechanism, essentially?
I know, it's a guaranteed maximum price contracting, contract, you know, project delivery method. So it's a cost plus would be, you know, give us your cost and add your expenses onto it, it's kind of a blind contract.
It's a 6.5% of referred to then?
They, that's the, of the, they submit their proposal, you know, they have their sub bids, material cost, equipment cost in there. And then they can only mark that up by six and a half percent.
Okay, so that's what I meant by the plus part, so. So it's somewhere, okay, that makes sense. So basically, the upfront fee is what we're committing to for sure. And then whatever subsequent contracts we give, we award, we pay an additional 6.5%.
Correct, that CMGC fee will not change to the course of the contract.
Okay. Thanks.
Additional questions for staff or discussion items? Other than that, I will entertain a motion.
I think we better make it so that we can flush the toilet. For that, I moved to authorize the city manager to enter into a construction manager, general contractor agreement with Slayden Constructors, Inc. for the wastewater treatment plant, condition assessment improvements project, subject to city attorney review of the contract.
And I'll second. Councillor Hokinson, you take those really hard positions, don't you?
I know.
We have a motion by Councillor Hokinson and a second by Councillor Exner. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye?
Aye.
A nay or a thumbs down? Motion carries. All right, thank you. We'll move on forward to our public hearing. Let me pull up my hearing script. All right, so this is a continuation of our public hearing for land use file number 20-028-Tree-FH-PD. The public testimony portion of this hearing has been closed as of February 16th, 2021. I am now going to poll our hearing body for any new ex parte contacts since our last meeting, February 16th. This includes any in-site visits. All right, seeing none, I will look for a staff recap.
Mayor, I apologize. We're, I know you said you wanted to recognize Councillor Exner at the beginning of, was I misunderstanding?
Well, my, my plan was to recognize Councillor Exner when we got into the additional questions for applicant and or staff.
My apologies, excuse me.
We'll be appropriate.
All right, great. So let's go ahead and go with the staff report.
Hi, Mayor and Council, let me just share my screen. So this presentation's going to be very brief. I'm just going to go over very high-level things related to this application, instead of going into details about what the substance of the application is. So we're talking about the views plan development, which is a request for a plan development, which includes a zone map amendment, a subdivision, two type three special variances, official overlay and tree removal. This is a slide that I had in the last presentation, but I just added those two bullet points on the bottom. Tonight, March 1st is the city council hearing, and then March 15th is the end of the 120-day clock extension. Extending the 120-day clock is up to the discretion of the applicant, and they have extended it to March 15th. On that date, we need to have the signed final order. We have received a few additional exhibits, exhibits since the last city council meeting. We added the Parks and Trails Advisory Board minutes from their meetings in September and October as exhibits to the staff report. We did that because the advisory board discussed this application at those meetings. We attached a letter from the applicant's lawyer extending the 120-day clock to March 15th. And then we also included the questions that we received from Councillors Hokinson and Exner with staff and applicant responses to those questions.
And Shelley, I apologize for interrupting. We did include the questions received from Councillor Walker as well.
Okay, great. There was also a question about a public comment that we received, a letter that we received. Unfortunately, we received that letter after the public hearing was closed. And we were advised by our city's attorney to not include that in the, as an exhibit of the staff report, as it constituted new evidence. So just a reminder, this is the list of possible motions that city council can take. First option is approve the application with the conditions and findings as recommended by the planning commission. Option B, approve the application with the conditions and findings determined by city council, so adding any conditions that you think are appropriate. Option C, deny the application because code criteria aren't met. Option D, ask the applicant to revise the proposal and extend the 120-day clock, which is unlikely, as the applicant has already said at the last meeting, that they would prefer not to extend the 120-day clock. And then option E, continue the hearing to a future city council date, which, like option D, is unlikely, as the applicant has already said that they are not, that they don't believe it's appropriate to extend the 120-day clock past May 15th. I said it would be short, and so that's, that's what it is.
All right, thank you. We are now to any additional questions for the applicant and/or staff. I'm going to go ahead and go to Councillor Exner.
Yeah, before we go there, sorry Carl to cut you off, but I wanted to make sure our city attorney, Chris Cream, didn't have anything additional that he wanted to add.
No, thank you, Kelly. Thank Mayor, city councillors. I just want to reiterate, make sure that everyone knows to disclose any communications, verbal communications, email communications, whatever you may have had on this subject since the last meeting. And, oh, what was that? Yeah, and there was some small bit of information that was received after the last meeting by staff. That information was, is not included in the materials that are before you, and are therefore not considered by the city council as part of the decision you make tonight. With those, just those two procedural notes, that's all I have to add. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Exner?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, recognize the fact that at the last meeting of the city council, I decided that we would want to have our, any additional questions that the staff was to be evaluating, done by a certain timeframe. And we all agreed to do that, and I think that it's important to recognize that there were several reasons for doing that besides just staff time and their preparation to be able to answer those questions. And I know that there were some councillors that got their time questions in time, and I appreciate that. I think at this point, though, that we ought to be careful about what we ask for in the future during this time, especially if it requires staff to evaluate additional information, different questions, excuse me, that might require some research. I think it's inappropriate to be able to ask the staff to make any more conversation on, on research quests, data analysis, things that might require maybe some assumptions, especially when we are under our timeframe, and I believe it's important that the council provides information on a timely manner. So what I like to do is propose a motion that, at this point, we not allow any more questions from council that require in-depth research from our staff now, and I'd like to give them the ability to say that requires too much information to be researched or that there is information that couldn't be done tonight, have to have more in-depth evaluations. So that, I would say, the motion would be specific about giving the staff chance to say that can't be evaluated tonight, and that I did not want to restrict questions and refinements and in-depth conversations about the current information. I don't want to do any of that. I just think it's appropriate that we ask staff to evaluate more in-depth kinds of questions. So my motion would be to restrict that.
I have a quick, I have a quick question for our city attorney before I get to discussion. I mean, I guess the motion is more along the lines of how we would conduct our meeting, right? And how we would look to ask questions of staff and have them answer it back. I don't really view, and maybe I'm hearing it wrong, so I apologize, but I don't really hear a motion as to, you know, an action we would necessarily take as a council.
Well, just to respond to that, I am saying that I don't feel like staff should be asked to do additional research. Now, they spin off the top of their head that they know the data, but to be able to ask them questions that would require evaluation, required investigation, those kinds of questions. We've had, we've had chances to be able to ask that question under a time constraint that we already specified at the last council meeting. And that, I'm just limiting the amount of time it would take to evaluate more in-depth questions. Hopefully that.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine. Let's go. I saw Councillor Walker's hand go up first, and then I saw Smallwood and then Peitzold. So let's go in that order, please.
So, um, this is my first go-around on development, and so, you know, I apologize that it's taken me a long time to kind of digest it all and try to figure out how it all works. So a little, you know, I guess I apologize that it, you know, it took me a lot longer to kind of figure everything out and ask the right questions. I spent days looking at this, and so it's not something that I just pulled out of my hat the last minute. I've been working days on this, try, you know, there was a thousand pages, and I did look through it all and really tried to kind of get an understanding for it. I think what's, I guess I would like to get some input from, you know, I don't think any of my questions require a lot of in-depth analysis. And if they do, it's, it's okay, you know, I'm okay with somebody saying, well, that's going to take, you know, more time than we have here. But I think, I guess I'm, I'm kind of confused by, well, you know, one person can ask a question and it's deemed too detailed or, or needs analysis, and another person might get a different answer, and that's all seems very subjective. And I don't, you know, I want us all to be fair, and I'm okay with an I don't know answer. I'll just take that, you know, under advisement. But I have, I've been coming to these meetings for a long time, and I've never, in my, in my history, have I ever kind of, I honestly, I don't think I can ever recall us, you know, having all the questions have to be in by a week before the meeting. That's, I'm, you know, I mean, maybe Kelly can weigh in here, but that's a first for me, and I, I guess I, you know, unless we're all just going to just shut up and vote here, I think the questions are an important part of this process. That's what I was looking forward to. I just have a few, you know, I probably have four, you know, I had a whole lot listed there, but, you know, I have some four or five key ones that I just kind of need to get clear on before I can really, you know, kind of figure out exactly where I am on this whole thing. I mean, it's a wonderful proposal, and I love the architecture of the proposal, of the designs and things like that, but there's some just key questions. So I guess I don't want to ramble, but I am concerned about the, this is my first time, I'm sorry I didn't get them in earlier. I, I don't think that's ever been a requirement before. I don't want to be held to a higher standard than anybody else has ever been held to, and I'm going to try to do better next time or do my best. And like I said, if you don't, if there's not an available answer, then, then I can, I can live with that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor. I am going to meet my promise to you, Councillor Smallwood. The only thing I would say to council is, is please, like, let's not get into one of those debates on process. Like, there are questions, if we have questions, let's ask staff our darn questions, let's move forward, like, let's, now, I, Councillor Walker, I see you nodding. I'm not going to be one for you asking your 25 questions when you had, you know, two weeks since the last time. So, you know, we've got to move forward in an expeditious way, in a realistic way, in a way that allows everybody to ask their questions, to get answers back, but it allows us to move forward tonight and not go on and on and on. And, and I'm not also going to look for people to ask questions if, you know, they're, they're just going to go to a decision that they've already made up in their head prior to the meeting anyways. This isn't about debating each other with our questions and everything else. It's just getting to a decision, on a non-biased decision, on just, on a, on a development proposal in front of us. And we just, we need to advance with that process. With that said, Councillor Smallwood.
Yeah, you know what? I'm sorry. This entire conversation is completely inappropriate, as far as I'm concerned. So in our last meeting, we were told, Kathleen, that you had 25 questions that you wanted to ask, and so we decided as a body that we would reconvene at a later date, and this body agreed that 48 hours was enough time for people to get their questions in. Everybody had their time to get their questions in in 48 hours. You have waited 14 days to get those questions in, completely inappropriate. So I'm going to clarify Councillor Exner's motion that no questions be submitted past the 48-hour window, which would have been, I believe, the 17th of February, and that no questions get answered beyond that. There's my motion.
Let's go, Councillor Peitzold?
Yeah, um, so as I mentioned at the last one, I haven't ever seen when we'd have an extended window where we asked council or staff, and that was just kind of an odd thing. But did we reserve the right to ask questions when we came back to that? Because I was looking forward to the questions I hear to be able to understand the development more from those questions and then be able to ask those questions of following up on that piece of it. So I think it is still appropriate to ask questions here in this session. I don't believe we have time, nor were we given time to go back and have staff researching anything. And I don't think that's, would be anybody's desire there from having this meeting here. But I do want to say I do expect and reserve the right to ask questions during this meeting, like we had suggested at the beginning. I think it was given some time for the exorbitant amount of questions to be able to, for the time period we had that one night, that people could get in and get in place. And so I do appreciate those questions that were submitted and the staff working on that. And even with the answers through the thing, it said, you know, question was answered by city staff, and so trying to find that is very confusing for me. And so me asking the same question, because I just don't follow some of the connecting dots on, on that, you know, like, you know. So anyways, and if I'm the only one dense on that, then forgive me on that, but. So anyways, that's my point. I believe we do have the right to be able to ask questions from the last one and not go into that blind. But we all still did leave this open to be able to ask the applicant their questions as well. So that's where I stand.
Thank you. Councillor Exner was next in the queue, but Chris, I see your hands up, and I always like to go to the attorney.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Perhaps I can provide a little guidance on the procedures here that may help focus the discussion. Well, I understood Councillor Exner's motion, it was to prohibit questions that would require staff to go away, conduct research, and then come back, because that would require another meeting, and you just don't have that time. You're at the end of the 120 days, you have to make a decision tonight. So that, that motion kind of resolves itself, because there is no ability for staff to go away and come back at another meeting and answer the questions. So you can't ask any questions that can't be answered tonight, because you have to make a decision tonight. And if you ask a question like that, the answer will be, I don't know, and we don't have time to research it. As far as, as the count, the scope of the questions that can be asked, there's certainly no reason why questions couldn't be presented in writing ahead of time or asked verbally at the meeting. So I wouldn't want any of the councillors to feel like they were constrained in what they can ask, except as Councillor Exner points out, if your question requires additional research, it's not, we're not going to be able to get back to you tonight. So other than that, I don't think there are any restrictions on what can be asked, whether they were submitted in writing ahead of time or not. Submitting them in writing ahead of time just gave us time to prepare, so that we could get, we can give you thorough, thought-out, well-researched answers, rather than having to answer questions on the fly. But otherwise, there's no difference between the questions that were submitted in writing and those that you might ask at the hearing tonight. The applicant, I know, is prepared to answer whatever questions were presented in writing and any other questions the council may have.
Thank you, Chris. All right, so I'm going to go back to councillors, but I would, I would love to hear a question for the applicant or staff. I really would. Councillor Exner, and then Sheldon, Hokinson, and then Walker.
I really want to just be able to make sure that we have a decision tonight. I'm very frustrated in that some of the questions go on into, in things that just don't make much sense to be talking about. And I want us to stay on focus, on point, able to get all the questions that need to be asked. And after the question timing, I don't believe we have time to go out and do any more research. I think it has to be done tonight. And that's the intention of my motion. I do not want to stop people from asking questions. I just want us to make a decision.
I just want us to make a decision tonight. And that's the reason for the motion was to keep further research, further evaluations on the fly, statements by staff that they really haven't, the preparation to be able to make a qualified answer for. I just don't want that to happen.
All right. Councillor Sheldon.
Yeah, thank you. The attorney kind of put in much better words than I was going to say. I feel like we're, right now we're spinning our wheels, but there seems to be a motion on the table that we haven't dealt with. So if we can just agree to, I mean, it's staff, staff isn't an option tonight. So I wanted to deal with that motion and move this thing forward so that we can quit debating though.
We don't have to debate the motion. I mean,
Cool.
We don't have to do anything. I mean, I'm not going to be a jerk. I just, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's totally fine. And I'll, I'll withdraw what I said because the, the city attorney in color, right? And, and Jeremy, I want you to be able to ask your questions. That's not where I was going to. It was basically that, you know, just the inappropriate timing to me of last minute, you know, length of questions being given on the day of a meeting. And I, that's just not okay.
And what I was going to say too is, is you're going to get questions off of the applicant's responses too. So that to not be able to have any more questions, I don't think is reasonable either. So, okay, well, cool. I look forward to moving forward then. Let's go.
Let's do it. I'm with you. I second councillor's, councillor Sheldon's motion to move forward.
There you go. So is your hand still up though councillor Hawkinson? Or are you just ready for people to ask questions?
I have a question when we get to that point in the agenda.
We're there, man. I mean,
Am I up? Cool.
Please.
Okay. So first of all, I just thank you for the staff for answering my huge set of questions. Obviously, this is new for me as well as Kathleen and others. And so I, I will tell you, I've invested probably a couple dozen hours or more in, in research and trying to understand. So very appreciative of putting those, you guys going through those questions. I will say, I'm glad we didn't cut it off at 48 hours because I was actually a day and a half late submitting mine. I did communicate with staff, but they, they were not on time. So to Jeremy's point, I just want to point out too that, that the format that the responses are in is largely how I started mine, which is, you know, paragraph by paragraph type questions. And then the second column is refers, the first draft of that is where staff responded. And then those same sets of questions were passed on to the applicant. And the applicant responded on those where the, where the city had said, where the city staff said that the applicant should respond. So you kind of have to look at both files to get the sum total of, of the responses on the various questions. That said, I do have a question now for, for our staff. In the staff report of February 16th, there was a statement made. The basic, in the second paragraph, which basically says, in addition, the applicant is request, I assume it's meant requesting typo, row homes and multifamily housing, which are not typically permitted outright in the subject zoning district. I would like to understand what not typically permitted outright meant, because I didn't find anything that would suggest that it would ever be permitted. So please explain when it comes to multifamily housing.
I think the word typically could have been left out because row houses and multifamily housing are not a permitted outright use in single family residential. And what that means is that if somebody were to submit a proposal for a single family subdivision and a single family residential zone area that was just single family homes and met all of the development criteria, met the code to a T, then it would be up to the discretion of the director of development services to approve or deny that application. But because a request is being made to include something that is not a permitted outright use in SFR zoning, that's why it's going to planning commission and city council. So I guess the short answer to your question is typically, we could have left that word out.
So follow-up question, if you don't mind, Mayor. Is there, if, if somebody was applying for, on this, this property, an SFR zone property, would we ever, what would be the process for them to be allowed to do multifamily? Outside of the PD.
It would need to be a zone change.
It would need to be a zone change, exactly. Okay. So, so I think that was completely misleading. What the PD effectively does is bypasses zone change. Is that true?
I would say no.
Because this is blank.
A PD isn't allowed use within the zone. So no, it is not bypassing his own change. It's an alternative to his own change.
So may, may, may I? So if we were to put, so just on a different kind of development, if we were to put like an over, is an overlay sidestepping the zone then, or is that just, would you give me the same answer?
No, PD isn't overlay. That's exactly what it is. But it's not a zone change. Those are two separate processes. Zone change has to be notified to DLCD, the state agency. You have to go through a lot of inventory analysis like they did with Bull Run Terrace. It's a completely different animal than a PD. And I don't know if Chris wants to speak to that because he's counsel to other jurisdictions in Oregon that have PDs as well.
So in, in general, PD or in other jurisdictions, a PUD, planned unit development, allows the same type of development, residential development in the zone. But what it does is allows you to get away from the typical dimensional standards, the site design standards. You can have, you can vary block lengths and lot sizes. You can have a range of lot sizes. So you could have small lots ranging to big lots. It allows for more creativity and flexibility in the site design. Rather than just, you know, 20 cookies, cookie cutter, 5,000 square foot lots or 7,500 square foot lots. You get a more varied, diverse product. Sandy is unusual, I think, in that it allows different housing types, multifamily in a single family zone. I don't know a lot of other jurisdictions that do that, but the PD in general is allowed, is there, is designed to allow creativity and flexibility in the site design, rather than just a straightforward subdivision. So that's, it's, the both, both zone types allow residential. This one just allows more types of residential if you approve the PD.
Thank you. All right. Councillor Walker.
This is a question for either Chris or David. I'm not sure who kind of got involved in this part of the process. But in different aspects of the staff report and some memos and different things, it mentions that a comp plan amendment was not needed, then it was needed. And evidently something got submitted on October 28th that made it not needed again. Can somebody kind of, I can't, I couldn't find what was submitted on October 28th and there was no discussion as to the rationale to why a comp plan was or was not needed. And could you just kind of give me the, the, kind of the legal answer to that, if you would, either Chris or Dave?
Right. So David is, was, is not here. It's my understanding that the, the applicant and staff frankly took a broad view as, is best practice frankly, of all of the potential things that might be necessary for this project to move forward. And so it was evaluated whether a comp plan amendment would be necessary. Ultimately, it was concluded that it was not necessary. But that's just the, sort of the standard winnowing process you go through when, in evaluating a project and all the different types of permits that will be necessary. I think Shelley's presentation at the beginning listed the six or five, no, six or seven different types of approvals that are necessary. That's what we ended up with at the end of the day, that would be necessary for this project to be approved. But one of the things that we concluded would not be necessary was a comp plan amendment. And I'm, I, I don't want to get out in front of the headlights on what was specifically contemplated and why it was concluded it wasn't necessary. I'll let Kelly respond to that. But that's why you see things in the record about discussion about whether or not a comp plan amendment was necessary. We ultimately concluded that it wasn't. I would, so there's nothing frankly major there.
Yeah, I remember the exact reason why we contemplated it was, if you want me to speak to it, Shelley, I don't know if you remember that. We thought that the areas that were going to be owned by an HOA were going to be dedicated to the city of Sandy as parkland. And therefore we thought that a comp plan and a zone change were going to be needed to turn those areas to parks and open space, the POS zoning designation. The applicant then clarified for us that our assumption was incorrect and that it was actually going to be owned and maintained by an HOA. So that dropped the whole comp plan and zone change requirement. So that's pretty much how that all fell out.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted to add, I was just looking at your letter, councillor Walker. I didn't really have much chance to look at it. But yeah, we don't write the staff report in coordination with an applicant. We don't really collude like that. But what I can tell you is that prior to issuing it, sometimes the applicant asks for the staff report. And if they look at it and they see some things that we made wrong assumptions on, or they see things that they would like to edit or change in their proposal, we will then usually work with them to submit more details to us and then we'll reissue the staff report with those changes. And that's, you know, that's typical in most jurisdictions, all three that I've worked in, that that's how the process works.
Thank you, Kelly. And councillor Smallwood. Oh, your hand is up. So maybe just a reminder.
It probably just, it probably just didn't get dropped down from before.
I'm just going to take it. You were giving me a high five. All right. Councillor Hawkinson.
Two questions. First one's procedural. And when, when is appropriate to stop the question and the Q and A with, with the applicant and then move into just discussion? What's our pros and cons for continuing? Because right now it seems like we're very internal focused right now.
Yeah, it does. And I think mainly it's probably because we started internal focused in the conversation. But yeah, I mean, to your point, Don, the big difference is, is after we close a public hearing, we can stay internally focused with our conversation or questions. So this is really kind of the last opportunity for members of our council to ask clarifying questions to the applicant. So if we're done with questions to the applicant, we can close this portion or if we have additional, let's, let's go for it.
So let me make a broad question, because obviously I put out a number of questions and I would like to invite the applicant to respond if he wishes to, on behalf of any of those questions or topics.
Yeah, that's fine.
Mayor, I apologize. I just wanted to bring to your attention that the applicant's attorney has his hand up.
Well, Jeff, why don't we go ahead and, I mean, just like he was here during our last hearing, I mean, I think that was the expectation that we would have the applicant's team. So.
Yeah, he indicated to me he was happy to have Mr. Brown, but that he would raise his hand if he felt it was necessary. So.
Well, you know, I've dealt with Mr. Robinson a little bit now and he, he's never shy to raise that hand. So. Hello, sir.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Pulliam, members of city council. So thank you for your time tonight. Tracy Brown is going to be the applicant's representative tonight and answer questions. But Mayor, I wanted to confirm in addition to councillors Hawkinson's questions, we weren't able to provide written answers to councillor Walker, but we are prepared to answer them orally. And we would appreciate allowing Mr. Brown that opportunity. That's all I had.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I guess my only question to the applicant is, is how long is this oral response going to take?
If Mayor Mike Robinson, again, if you're asking me, I would encourage Mr. Brown to be brief.
Me too.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can be as lengthy or as brief as you would like. And, you know, the, I actually, all of councillor Walker's questions, I was able to answer in one or two sentences, pretty much. And, you know, and then I don't know if councillor Hawkinson or councillor Exner have any questions about the answers I provided to their questions. So I'm glad to go through councillor Walker's questions or
He'd like to quickly.
Sure to answer your questions, any, any of all questions. Okay.
If you, so you. I'm sorry. I feel like if you feel like you could, you know, get through these in a decent amount of time, you know, feel free.
Okay. Yeah, I'll do that then. So what I'll primarily do, I think, is rather than repeating the questions, so some of the questions are pretty complex and lengthy. I was going to mainly just kind of identify where I am in the questions and then provide an answer to those questions. You know, probably I'll skip the questions about the comp plan at this point because I feel like that has already been answered because the first page of her questions primarily have to do with those. So on the next page, there was questions about sidewalks. And so the, the answer is, you know, most sidewalks are included in the public rights away. There's a few meandering sidewalks that are proposed within public pedestrian access easements. So this will guarantee that the public is able to walk on all of these sidewalks, whether they're in the right of way. And if we were to calculate the difference, there's a question about the, how we calculate density. And it would be a very negligible difference if all sidewalks were in the right of way versus the way it's being proposed. The next question had to do with, it's question on number 29. So the answer is, as shown on submitted plans and reviewed in the staff report, the application exceeds on-street parking requirements. So there's a concern about there's smaller lots. Are we still meeting the city's on-street parking? And so there's an exhibit in this, in the submittal showing that we not only meet, but we exceed the number of required parking spaces by code. Is this, is this working for you all to go through this way? I just wanted to kind of check in. Okay.
Do it this way. I'd appreciate a non-back and forth. Yeah, let's just.
Okay. So next question, number 45, or it, you know, it's reference number 45. So this is a concern about the billable lands inventory and housing inventory. And my response is, you know, once the actual lot count is determined based on an approved subdivision, then that will be used kind of going forward in the development of the billable lands inventory and what is the available land. There's a need to kind of update that. Next question. Basically, my answer without repeating the question, my answer is that this is not how density is calculated per chapter 1730. Maximum density is calculated based on net area of the site times the maximum allowed density per net acre. And so I, I kind of rejected the table that was provided based on that response. The next is number 48C has to do with the lot size. And so the proposal has a variety of lot sizes that are intended to allow a variety of housing types and price points. And this is kind of key, rather than having all large lots that are, you know, going to be not affordable by except those people with, you know, quite a bit of money. This provides a variety of housing types. And when I reiterate, parking requirements are met with the proposal and exceeded. And the homes on all of the lots will need to comply with the Sandy style design standards. So the Sandy style design standards basically limit the ability to do what is called snow houses. So all the, all of the dwellings will need to meet the design standards regardless of the size of lot. The next had to do with the side yard setback request. So the, the applicant is proposing a reduction in the side yard just to provide a little more flexibility in the housing design. And, you know, my response is that this space of two and a half feet on each side is hardly sufficient to provide space for extra cars, RVs and things like that. So really it's not giving up anything that would, you know, that, that's really usable space, that extra two and a half feet. And it does come our fire code allows, you know, obviously attached dwellings. But if it's detached, it has to be at least three feet away without having a firewall there. So five feet, there's no problem with the fire code in that regard. Next question had to do, number 48F, and my response is none are proposed or required. This is, I guess, other pedestrian walkways. The, regarding the intent, the intent section should generally be considered the guiding principles of the chapter. And I think as you all talked about at your last meeting and the city attorney discussed, in this case, because these code criteria specifically reference the intent, they are they are kind of part of the code. And that, you know, the, the, basically, the code criteria is wanting the application to meet the majority or some of those intent statements, but not necessarily have to meet all of them. Regarding this, the surfacing and width of sidewalks, you know, all sidewalks will be constructive concrete and will be along those streets that she listed will be six feet wide. These sidewalks will be maintained by the homeowners association. And we will provide a detailed landscaping plan with this construction plans about what that will look like with the meandering sidewalks and the landscaping. And that's pretty typical.
Can you clarify for us, because a couple, it said two different things in some places. Like on the north side of Bonnie Street, is there sidewalks or just on the south side? As I said, it, it shows on some maps, but then in something else you submitted, you, you wanted to not have sidewalks.
There are sidewalks on both sides. The only place there's not a sidewalk on both sides is the View Drive coming into the development. And the south side of that street, we're proposing, because it's uptight against the Johnson RV, we're proposing a sidewalk on the north side only. But all other streets will have sidewalks on both sides. Sidewalks in the private drives, no, there aren't sidewalks in the private drives, and that's not a code requirement. Let's see, regarding the sidewalk on the highway, I think there's been some confusion about that, because the height, the sidewalk doesn't show up on every hand sheet. But there is a sidewalk proposed kind of at the top of the bank on the highway, on the highway side of the proposed sound wall. So there would be a, the lot, the sound wall, landscaping, and then the sidewalk. And then you would kind of go out into the, that steep bank toward the highway. And the reason we're proposing up there is because of pretty tremendous grade. And to put it down at the street level, I guess that's two things. ODOT didn't really want it down there. And they didn't want a curb down there. And it's really more practical from a pedestrian experience to be up on, away from that high-speed traffic. The next question, number 59. My response is, as noted in the staff report, a pedestrian access easement will be platted along all sidewalks, not, not located within a public right of way. Next one had to do with the HOA, if it dissolves. No, HOAs are governed by state law, I think, which was talked about last time, by the city attorney. And there are no, these deed restrictions are required. Next question, number 60. You know, the posted speed of the highway is determined by ODOT. As noted by the planning director at the last meeting, Kelly mentioned that the city, he had already reached out to ODOT to encourage them to study the speeds on that stretch of the highway. And, you know, that, that process, you know, may, may occur. But this development isn't going to fix that as part of this process. You know, it's, it's an ODOT and city kind of initiative. Next question, number 60. Regarding the variance and the high. Now there, these are kind of two separate topics. The request to put the front doors of those lots backing up to the highways from a livability perspective. And that's the reason for the sound wall. The sidewalk along the highway will be on the other side of the wall is to provide the connectivity, you know, from one side to the other. The initial proposal didn't include that, and we were relying on the internal street. But the developer agreed, you know, the city kind of wanted that, so we agreed that made sense. Number 63. Both the east and west ends of that sidewalk on Nap Street, which that, which is that internal street that parallels the highway, will have connections to the sidewalk on the highway. So one down at the west end and one at the east end, there'll be a connection. The next question, number 64. You know, the, regarding the apartments, you know, those two lots will require a separate design review application that would be submitted, you know, following this approval. And, you know, need to comply with all the applicable Sandy style design standards and parking requirements and landscaping for those lots. So that would be a separate and distinct application. Now, the reason we didn't submit it now is because the developer simply doesn't know exactly. It takes a bit of time and money to figure out a architectural design. And he wanted to do that following this initial approval. Number 73. As shown on the plans, a curb is proposed on the north side of the Views Drive. And if we were to look at a cross-section of that, the Views Drive, which goes down into the lower views, we would see a curb on the south side, the street section, a curb on the north side, a planter landscape, and then that six-foot meandering sidewalk along there. And, you know, from a, I think, or, you know, when, when that was proposed, I was kind of, I liked that look, because it had a, kind of provided a nice off-street connection between the upper and lower views. And I think the amenities between those two parts of the development are, you know, significantly tied together with that sidewalk. And we wanted to make it a little bit nicer pedestrian experience. Let's see, so number 73. Again, ODOT is the, or Highway 26 is under ODOT's jurisdiction. And ODOT did not require a curb along the stretch of the highway. The next question, the applicant is required to improve the half-street adjacent offices on Vista Loop Drive. Regarding improvements on Vista Loop, the applicant is required to improve the half-street adjacent to the development. And because there will be a need to extend a sewer line to the site along the north half of the street, it's likely that both halves adjacent to that development will be improved. But for sure, the south half. You know, this is kind of similar to the question that Counselor Exner asked. But beyond the development, these are, you know, existing conditions of that road. And there would be no, you know, requirement or, the applicant couldn't be compelled to do that, because it's an off-site improvement. But adjacent to the development, likely it will be fully improved. But at least the site, the path next to the property will be. There's a question about intersection spacing. And so the code or the, you know, the, the plan is all intersection spacing standards are met with the development. You know, basically, the intersection spacing standards are 150 feet. And so that's why you'll see that Ortiz Street opposing where existing Ortiz Street is. And the Nap Street is offset from Vista Loop by that at least 150 feet. So the answer.
I've kind of got the answer to that one already, if you want to skip it.
Oh, number 76, okay.
Well, we can all, we can all hear the answer.
Okay. So yeah, I'll go ahead. Number 76 has had to do with, let's see. As noted, the applicant's traffic study supplemental information is confirmed by the city's traffic consultant. A westbound right turn lane is not warranted. So the next question had to do with lighting and some other recommendations of the public works director. You know, all of these items will be addressed as applicable, including a lighting plan with the submittal, the construction plans. You know, this, this stage of the submittal is kind of the concept and the general theme and those things. It really, you know, the number of sheets will quadruple probably when the construction plans come in. It gets down into the details of all the street grades and the sewer depths and all that kind of stuff. So it's, it, all of those details will be addressed in the construction plans. Next question, number 83. All, all road widths comply with city standards? And the density has been calculated according to the city requirements by extracting public areas?
I just ask a little, just a little specific on that, because like the, the views, the main entrance into your big subdivision, it shows that one as being like 31 feet. But then it also shows on the parking plan, parking on either side. On your parking plan, on, on C10 sheet, it shows parking on either side of the entrance road into the views. And, and yet it's only showing the views as 31 feet wide. So I can't figure out how you can get two lanes of parking and presumably two lanes of traffic in that.
You know, what I might do is ask Ray Moore to come in to answer that question, if you don't mind. Can I, Ray, can you come in?
He has his hand up, Jeff, if you can.
Yep.
Hey, Ray. Ray, you're muted, you may need to unmute.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
For the record, Ray Moore, all Kenny Serviers and Planners, P O Box 955, Sandy, Oregon. And to answer the question about the parking, I, I think I understand it. You know, how it's laid out right now on the views, we have a gated entrance, nice gated entrance. The interesting thing on this is the gates are going to be welded open. We can't have a gated development in Sandy. So these gates are just aesthetics, there's a center island that enters into, enters into the site that's going to be landscaped. But once you get beyond that center island, so we have a two-way traffic, one way coming in, one way going out with an island in between it. Once you get beyond the island, if you look at the parking analysis plan, we provided enough room after the road becomes back to a standard width before we started adding the parking spaces. So essentially, it's a standard width road with parking on both sides, just like any, any public street. So I think that answered it, Kathleen, let me, you know, give me a holler if I didn't, I could.
Yeah, I mean, the plans just show the road is 31 feet total with two, two lanes of parking, you know, parking on either side. So I can't figure out how wide the actual road is. But I guess if you guys say it all meets the code, then I, I'll believe you and.
The city standard is a 28 feet for local streets. So as Ray mentioned, it's a little wider at the top where it intersects Vista Loop because of that kind of entrance gateway and that the little island median that's being put in a part of that. Then it next down to the standard local street width.
Correct, yeah. So basically, the standard local street, it does allow parking on both sides on a 28-feet, 28-foot-wide curb-to-curb street, which is what we're proposing.
Okay, so the next question. Let's see, my answer to this number 110, my answer is a separate exhibit was provided demonstrating compliance with this standard. Proposal complies with these applicable standards. This is, has to do with the cul-de-sac, and is there sufficient parking on the cul-de-sac? So there is a, I don't know what the exhibit, Ray probably knows the exhibit, but there is an exhibit in your packet that he calculated it, the entire cul-de-sac, and laid out how it complies with the code. Question part of 110. Again, you know, the proposal complies with the applicable standards. This is regarding, you know, the narrow lots and townhomes on those lots. Let's see. And then we kind of got into, these are additional questions which aren't, weren't numbered. So this is regarding the intent statement. And I think there's been enough discussion, but I'll just read my answer anyway. As, as was stated by the city attorney, planned developments are not only intended for village designations. None of the four PDs previously approved in the city are within a designated village. You know, I, I worked on all four of those planned developments, and none of them are in a village. And I don't think there is a.
Point of order, is that new evidence?
I don't know, I, I think we're answering questions.
Anyway, I'll stop there. Yeah, so. The next one has to do with zoning of property remains the same as it is today. The plan development process is intended to provide flexibility in, in design in exchange for increased open space and amenities. The proposal complies with at least four of the planned development intent statements. City code and state law do not require a billable lands review with each development proposal. Where I think we're getting down to the two last points. You know, I guess my, on the last page, my response was these items are addressed in the staff report. I didn't, there's a lot of different components to those. But I felt like they were all adequately addressed in the staff report regarding the, you know, pros and cons of, you know, variances and deviations and things like that. And then the last one is, development of the site is constrained by steep slopes and its location relative to the city limits and urban growth boundary. If you look at the, you know, the zoning map, you'll see that commercial development directly to the south, Vista Loop Drive, which is a collector's street, Highway 26, and also the depth of the sanitary sewer, which needs to be extended to the site. This is an additional constraint in the ability to serve the property. So that's, if there's other, you know, that's the answers to Kathleen's questions. If any of the other counselors have questions for us, I'd be glad to try to answer those.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Additional questions or discussion by council? Or I can entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Counselor Hawkinson.
There was a comment from, oh, shoot, page 22, let me find it really quick, that I just wanted to ask. So one of the, there was a, in the exhibits under the recently submitted, there was a comment from somebody who lives on Luzon Lane. And their question was about old gas and oil tanks that were either on the site or had been rolled over the hill, as well as an appliance burn spot. Was a survey done for any hazardous materials left over from former uses of the land? And if so, was there anything found?
I think I'll ask Ray and/or Mac even, the applicant, to answer that.
There, I started my video so you can see me. As far as hazardous waste, we don't know of any. I saw that too, and, you know, red flags popped up in my mind. And somebody with that sort of comment must have some history of the site that, that Mac and myself are not aware of. So we have had a geotech report study done, and they have found an area that had some fill. And that, you know, it's been part of our radar to, what we have to do is go in there. It's, it's called undocumented fill. So what we have to do is go in there and excavate that material. And so if any hazardous materials are found, will, they'll be dealt with at that time. So we are aware of a, a fill area. We're not aware of, you know, any sort of contamination at this point. But that will be addressed as we move forward with the project.
Thank you. Right, additional questions? Counselor Walker, and then Counselor Smollett.
One last question. So I think the thing that was kind of confusing to me is, is that our, our zones are defined, each, you know, SFR, low, medium, and all that are defined by, some of them are defined by minimum lot sizes, and some of them are defined by the width of the lot and, and the setbacks and all that. And so for me, when, when we have something that's, you know, at least 7,500 square feet and it's 60-foot wide, that's a, that's an SFR house. If we have something that's 40 feet wide and 2,500, that, that doesn't fit in the zones for, for medium or low or, or SFR. And so it fits in the category of hide, because that's kind of what it looks like. It's kind of like if it looks like a duck or walks like a duck or talks like a duck, it's a duck. And so what was kind of surprising. And so what was kind of surprising to me was when I kind of did look, take inventory of all the lots is that, you know, eight, almost eighty percent of the lots. Were in the, you know, in the forty-foot width range and and fitting more in the high category than in the. The lower, the medium, and that was a little bit surprising to me. So that's kind of how I got to that table as to how many, you know, units, you know. Kind of met the SFR versus the other zones. It had to do with the lot size and the width of the lot and the setbacks. And even then, the setbacks are not being met on some of those, but I just ignored the setbacks. But thank you.
Counselor.
I'd like to make a motion that would close the public hearing.
There's a. There's a motion by Counselor Smallwood and a second by Counselor Hokinson to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Aye.
Aye.
A pose, nay, or a thumbs down. Seeing then motion carries. We have now closed this public hearing. And I am now looking for any additional discussion by the hearing body. Discussion. Counselor Hokinson.
Thanks. Hey. Thank you for your patience, all of you, with with our questions and things as we go through things. This has been a learning experience for me. So I would like to share what I learned, and I invite anybody to. Contradict or tell me where my learnings off, because I see some big disconnects between what I'm hearing staff. And the applicant interpret our code. And what I consider to be the governing law that sits on top of our code. So in the ORS one ninety-seven, one seventy-five is the Oregon statute that basically says how land is supposed to be planned in cities. It's where we get the requirements for a comp plan, right? And there is a clause in there that says, under two D. If it's comprehensive plan and it's speaking of a city and land use regulations have been acknowledged by the commission, Luba. We then make, say. If it's, you have to, sorry, I should read the preface of it. You have to make land use decisions and limited land use decisions in compliance with the acknowledged plan and land use regulations. Which is interesting because up in B, it says you have to enact land use regulations to implement your comprehensive plan. So our code. Isn't the de facto, isn't the definitive final answer. It is a result of a comp plan that was mandated by the state of Oregon. And it says that we have to make land use decisions, looking at our code and our comp plan. So I I mean, I could go through a lot more details, but fundamentally, I'm stuck with a comp plan that says we. In that comp plan, as old as it is, it is policy, it was approved by people before I even moved to the city. That said, that area is supposed to be low-density residential. And in that low-density residential, it can have SFR and it can have R one. That's it. It doesn't make any provisions for multifamily dwellings or this tight-density layout. The only place that we run into this, where we suddenly allow for this plan development to basically hijack the zoning underneath it. Is in one clause in our code that was poorly written. And it talks about the residential districts and it lists all the types of things that could be in a residential district. And it doesn't clarify how that would lay relate back to its underlying zone. So with that little bit of leeway, a plan development can come in and trump our comp plan. And say, you know what, we had a comp plan, it's supposed to be this, but we're going to make it be something completely different. And and off we run because of this poorly written part of our code in seventeen sixty-four. Now. We can, if you interpret seventeen sixty-four without the comp plan, then yeah, no problem. They got, you know, this this meets the requirements, but the requirements were wrong. The code was poorly written and the overarching governance should be the comp plan that should provide guidance. Within staff and the planning commission want to know what the city council policy is on something, they should go to this the comp plan. Good or bad, that's our policy. So I turn it over to Chris. Tell me how wrong I am. I'm okay. I've been wrong before. And and educate me, please, or anyone else.
So. Obviously, I'm very familiar with one ninety-seven, one seventy-five. There is actually a different statute that directs cities to and counties to adopt comprehensive plans, but what one seventy-five does is say. Well, in one seventy-five repeats that, but it says you have to adopt a comp plan. That comp plan is really the third step in the statewide planning process. The first step are the statutory mandates. And by the way, the commission is not Luba, it's the Land Conservation and Development Commission. Luba.
Thank you.
So when the the statutes are adopted, the statutes created the land department, the Land Conservation Development Commission, which is staffed by DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation. And development. And they are directed by statute to prepare a list of statewide land use planning goals. And there are nineteen of them. Cities and counties then have to adopt, and this is under partially under the authority that you read in one ninety-seven point one seven five. Are required to adopt a comp plan and land use regulations that are consistent with those goals. That comp plan then is implemented through your development regulations, your development code. Once your development code is adopted, the comprehensive plan no longer applies directly to individual quasi-judicial development applications. It is only the regulations that apply. Right? And there is state law and Luba decisions and Court of Appeals decisions going back decades that reinforce that conclusion. So. Once your development code has, that implements your comp plan, once that code has been acknowledged. It's that development code that applies and that guides all of your decision-making in a quasi-judicial proceeding. And if the development code is unclear, is vague, is contradictory, as most all of them are, it to some extent. Then it is up to the city council to interpret what those provisions are. The courts have said where a code is unclear. Nobody is in a better position to understand what the city meant when it adopted that code than the city council that approved it. Well, we have this fiction that you all were the same city counselors that approved seventeen sixty-four, which isn't true. But the courts have said where a code is vague or ambiguous or unclear, the city council is the first and oftentimes last authority on what those vague provision means. Provisions mean, but let's be clear, you're not implementing the comp plan. That is done through the development code. So your comp plan does not apply to individual development applications such as this one. And again, there's there's just a boatload of case law going back decades on that point. So we're at sort of in the hierarchy of statutes, planning goals, comprehensive plan, development code, we're down here, and those are the criteria that apply to this decision. Because that's how the system was built. Does that help? Oh, one, I'm sorry, one other thing that's relevant on this, there's another statute that I would encourage you to become familiar with that also informs this discussion. And that's just, that's what is called one of the needed housing statutes. It's ORS one ninety-seven point three oh seven. And it says that as for residential housing application, development application such as this one, you can only apply clear and objective standards. But it says, except as provided in subsection six, you can only apply clear and objective standards. Subsection six says the city can have a discretionary path with more subjective criteria, but the developer gets to decide which path to follow. The developed, so city Sandy does have both a clear and objective path and a discretionary path. The PD is the discretionary path, and the applicant in this case chose to. Apply under that discretionary set of criteria rather than the clear and objective criteria. So the PD actually implements a different statute, one ninety-seven point three zero seven subsection six. It's a discretionary, it allows the city to apply discretionary standards. But it also get on the flip side, gives the developer more flexibility in designing the project. So that's the trade-off that you get in the discretionary standard, and the only reason frankly a developer would ever go down that avenue. So does that help Counselor Hokinson?
Yes and and no. So I I I feel for you, but you also said you opened the door there which said council interprets. Right?
That's correct.
Especially where it's vague or unclear. And I would submit the the clause that the that we have is completely unclear in terms of. Why we permit. Let me back up. With with a PD that spans more than one zone. Right? Which I think is how PDs are generally envisioned, and a village definitely is an example of this because you're mixing lots of different underlying uses. And with the PD, you have the ability to mix and match. You get to move things around. You get to transfer your densities. You get to come up with a usage that is far superior than what they you would be constrained with if you use the underlying zones. And that makes perfect sense, and that's that's talked about in the comp plan as old as it was, that that was intended. Anytime you can improve upon the goal set out in the comp plan, go for it. When you put a a PD over a single zone. For this express purpose of changing the allowable structures that would be on it. Like I said, the only rhyme or reason the comp plan doesn't talk about that, it makes no mention in our policy about. That we would desire to take a land that is LDR and turn it into something that's not low-density residential. So. The clause, you know, going back to our code basically says, in these residential districts, we would allow these kind of structures, blah, 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 and they're just listed. Right? They're just listed. There's no requirements on them. There's no anything. They're just a listing of them, four bullets, and then it's list the same thing for commercial. So for me, that seems vague, that seems unclear. So when we apply, can we apply discretion to that?
It it is, those are, because they're unclear, they are by definition discretionary. Right? Those are subjective criteria. They're not, they're not objective criteria. They are subjective criteria. And so you get to apply. Now, you can't adopt an interpretation that is just flat-out inconsistent with the language that you're interpreting. Your interpretation has to be plausible. That's the legal standard is has to be plausible. But you do have the discretion to interpret those those code provisions, the the approval criteria. And it, you know, it seems clear to me that that this council might have made different policy decisions when adopting PD language. And, you know, maybe there's a project going forward to revise this section of the code, but right now, these are the criteria you have.
Right? Thank you. That helps a lot.
Thank you. Kelly, did you want to weigh in?
All I was gonna add is kind of, I think, what Chris just summarized at the end is that. I think there's definitely a lot of discretionary standards and clauses within our development code. However, I don't think seventeen sixty-four twenty areas of application is one of those. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate that. While the council has the ability to interpret the code, I think when it's one sentence and only. Seven words, and we've already had our city attorneys weigh in on it, I don't think there's any other way of interpreting that section is all I was gonna add.
Thank you. Ashley.
Yeah, I just wanted to very quickly add, you know, when we talk about. Applications or portions of applications that aren't meeting the development code, whether it's a planned development. Or a special variance or a design deviation or an adjustment or whatever, you know, multitude of words we use for. Any time a developer is proposing something that doesn't meet the letter of the code. Those processes are built into the comprehensive plan, right? They're built into the land use application process. That's the whole reason we have a planning commission is to review those instances in which the developer is proposing something that doesn't meet the 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 letter of the code. And so I think it's important that we be thoughtful about. Remembering that this is part of the process, right? That the reason this is coming to city council. Is because they are requesting something that's not. Being proposed according to the letter of the code. And when we talk about the discretionary process, as opposed to clear it cleared objective process, that's what this is. This is the discretionary process. And that's the job of city council is to use that discretionary process to determine if. These things that are being proposed that don't meet the letter of the code are worth the trade-offs, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you. Mike, okay, Counselor Hokinson.
Sorry, Kelly, you mentioned seventeen sixty-four twenty as the one sentence, but that's not the one I'm referring to. So I'm referring to seventeen sixty-four sixty allowed uses. Because in section two, that's where it says housing types may include, comma, but are not limited to. Single-family dwellings, duplexes, row houses, clustered dwelling units, multiple-family dwellings, or manufactured dwellings. Once again, a very subjective sentence. It doesn't say you have to allow all those things. It just says may. And you're not even limited to those things. So I assume you could come up with something not on that list, but it it clearly indicates some discretion there. I think so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I'd have to turn to Chris Cream, but typically in different zoning designations, if you look at any of our zoning designations in Sandy or other cities, you could do the same thing. That's how it's pretty much written in all those sections and. Typically, when the uses are listed, those are the permitted uses, and if they're not listed, then they're either listed in the conditional use section, and if they're not listed there, then they're just prohibited. So typically, when they're written like this, all the uses listed are allowed. And then anything else, the. Yeah, the but are not limited to, I think all that says in my interpretation is that it could be additional residential types, but I don't think. It's saying that the following list of residential types. Would not be allowed. That's not how I read that sentence. I don't know how Chris would read that sentence.
Well, I think it's. It's there to broaden the housing types that would otherwise be allowed in the underlying zone. So where you've got a single-family zone and you want and you opt for the PD process, the reason you do that is to achieve additional housing types. If all you wanted to build was a single family, you wouldn't need the PD. But that doesn't mean that any, that an application has to include all of those, for heaven's sakes. Yeah, but those, it it's in a section called allowed uses, so it certainly suggests that all of those housing types are at least allowed in a PD.
Yes.
All right, well, continuing discussion, I guess I'll I'll kind of, I'll jump in as I. You know, I really like this project. I'll just come forward with that. You know, as I think, the reason I'm on council, quite honestly, is is I like to think that I'm trying to help build a a better community. For our future and for my kids and my grandkids and an affordable community. We've had a lot of conversations as a council that, you know, we can't necessarily control growth. But what we can control is the manner in which, you know, our our community does grow. When I look at this project, I see a variety of housing opportunities. I think an individual could find themselves coming back home, graduating from from college, living in their first apartment. Purchasing their first home, all the way up to their their last dream home, all staying within the same neighborhood. We get additional public infrastructure and amenities for people in that community as well as our residents through this proposal, all kinds of parks and recreational. Opportunities and I just, I I real, and we get more tax revenue. That quite frankly, we'll be getting more money into our wastewater treatment process by this project coming online. When we talk a lot about infrastructure in our community failing, you know, when we make these public. Improvements, it's, you know, it's coming from two pots of of money. It's either coming from our current residents who are going to have to pay out of their own pockets, or it's going to come out of future growth. And of course, there's, there's other buckets where you go into the state and feds and different things like that, but we we all know how hard, you know, that money is to come by. And to really make significant improvement and 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 forward motion, you know, you've you've got to turn to growth. So for a variety of reasons, I'm I'm pro this development. I think it brings a lot of really good things to our community, and I think it really does highlight. In a lot of ways, what smart growth is supposed to be about. I see some hands up, Counselor Pete Sold, and then Hexner.
I'll let Carl go. He was first for a long time before me.
I was busy.
Carl, you're muted.
There it is. I figured it out yet. In in terms of how I evaluate this thing, I'm kind of a splitter. So in terms of what I look at this thing, I see. We have variations. We've got to make the decisions on, we have deviations, which the variations were the things about the. The sidewalk running up and down the highway and then which way the houses face.
That's a variance, just two of those. And then there's some deviations, and I think there is a half dozen of those. Those are things like block lengths. Some other issues about, uh, sizes of lots and things. And then really what I focus on is probably the biggest issue for me is multi-housing. And how that fits. I know councillor Hockenson has got high level concern about that, and my suspicion is there's some others out there. But it comes down to the fact that the council, this council can make that decision. Either to let them, and I'll stay with the multi-housing issue for the moment, that we can leave it as is, we could take it out, or maybe some modification in between. And so I, I guess from my mind is I guess it would be best for me to hear how everybody feels about maybe the, just the multi-housing and get that behind us so we can focus on the next sets of questions and come up with a aggregate response and decision on this one. So for me, the multi-housing provides the mix of residential, uh, preferences that I see the Sandy of, uh, city of Sandy needs. We need entry level. Uh, we have a lot of entry level houses on the property, on the city, I mean, but uh, there are almost no inventory at this point. Under three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, there are two houses at this current point that are available for sale in the entire nine seven oh five five. That's crazy. I, it, I won't go into detail about how it influences my buyers way of being able to buy those properties, but basically it creates an unaffordable housing situation. We need to have more of those kinds of housings, just like we need to have second step up houses, third step up houses. And, you know, the final, actually the final for me was would go as large as possible. And then the final one is is get to be a small one level house. And so I go back down again, but there is a need to provide a variety of, of housing types. And I think this particular development gives us the ability to decide how that works out. And I think the multi-house question is answered here. And I would be in support of how many houses we have in the multi-house category. I think there's twenty-four units and I am in favor of those.
Thank you councillor. Um, councillor Pete Sold.
Yeah, um, a little of my hands. I don't forget. There you go. Um, I, I like to thank, uh, Kathleen for her questions. Um, a lot of the same questions, you know, you've brought up, I had as well. That's why I reserved the right because I figured you guys were all excited and would ask a lot of questions. And so why do I need to sit there and ask questions? I mean, I've, I've seen councillor Walker ask questions for almost eighteen years and, and knew she would ask a lot of them, um, as well as Dawn. Thank you for laying that out and, uh, going through that. I also agree, I mean, I think I agree with a lot of everything, right? Um, you know, I agree with what Stan was saying. We do need, um, you know, the development in our community as well as what Carl's saying. So, you know, that's what's weighing on you, right? I come back to, I think Dawn, uh, was trying to bring up the point, which, um, I've been, as I read through and, and try to process this as well. Coming back to this intent of, um, what was placed in there. This is, um, farther away from the downtown. So the higher density aspects of things, which, you know, I don't know, I've just been around a little bit of time, but all I've heard was that that would be closer down into the communities of the downtown area for the transportation walkability and some of those things. And so I found it very surprising to have the planned development where they would have some of those things out on the very fringes of, um, our, uh, our city. So, um, you know, I'm not against planned developments, but I think there's the way planned developments are laid out or thought of, of the existing area or zone that was intended for the area when the comp plan came out. And I hear you, Chris, and what you, uh, commented on as well. I do appreciate that. I always love our lawyer's advice on that. But I think there's the point of that intent. And so, um, in that, um, it's a little bit different. This has definitely been, uh, zone. I know this isn't a zoning change, those type of things, but it is a type, um, regardless of that, it's a type of density, um, and a type of uh, of where that is, uh, located, uh, amongst our overall geographical area as well as in a zone, in a area that was been zoned low density, uh, for the, for since nineteen ninety-seven, I guess, um, in that area. So I see all that. I do hear all that and, you know, um, and I've thought about that over the years I was on planning and on city council, not just this, but in general, and what I've been learning from Tracy over the years as well, who's educated me a lot on, uh, back in the days of planning and other things about some of the things I stated there. So in that, whatever does get put in place will be there next couple hundred years. Let's just go with, you know, and so we gotta be very thoughtful of that and what the intent was on that because of that design for that. And I, I, uh, we need housing, but do we just let planned developments go anywhere for any reason? Just because it was submitted as a planned development? And so thinking through that process, I would be very leery of that. Um, and so anyways, those are my thoughts. Thank you for asking the questions because those questions helped answer things I don't have to re-bring up. Um, and, uh, and, and they're great questions and I love the new blood to be able to ask some of those questions because yes, um, I hear, I know some of these things, um, is, I mean, Carl's been around a long time, does too. And I think it's just good to re-bring those to the top of minds of, of those, um, that have been here a while as well, um, in that. But those, that's my thinking, um, on that. I'd be very cautious to, um, go against what was kind of already planned for such a outside on the fringes of our community to be, uh, changing in such a, that higher density aspect of things, some of the multifamily, some of those other things in a planned development.
One question I have for, and maybe it's in planning, and you may not have it, I guess I should have submitted it, um, is, uh, is transit and the ability for transit to get to that part of town to service that part of town easier and more accessible now with this development coming in. Like Vista, like we've been trying to get, you know, transit to Vista apartments for a long time, right? Is, is that whole loop easier now because we have more development there and getting transit in and out?
Um, I believe if you give me two minutes, I can find the finding in the staff report that talks about this, but, um, uh, we do have a finding in there about a transit stop required by, um, the transit department. Kelly, do you know any more details on that?
It wasn't letting me unmute. Um, not really. Um, that's kind of a separate evaluation that's done by the transit director. Um, I'm sure there'd be Star of the Dollar Ride. That'd be available to come out to those apartment buildings or any of the other sites, but as far as an additional transit route, you'd have to talk to Andy Howell about that.
My, my, my only point, go ahead, Dawn. Go ahead.
Why is it a PD? Without transit?
So I did find, um, in the staff report, finding number seventy-four, um, that they are, uh, putting in the condition, transit did recommend the condition to install a, uh, bus shelter pad and bench, um, at the north, northernmost corner of the View Drive and Vista Loop Drive.
Yeah, I think, I think what councillor Hockenson's referring to is actually called a transit oriented development, a TODD. That's not what's being proposed here. We don't even, even actually have any of those in Sandy that I'm aware of. That's like what, um, Arancos Station out in Hillsborough and some larger cities have a lot of those, but we don't have anything designated in the city of Sandy. Maybe we will with the new comp plan, but, um, there's nothing in our code currently. That's a transit oriented development.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I would just then finish up on that with my point being is that, you know, this development allows for more accessible transit, uh, probably, and most probably in the future. And, you know, and, and kind of going off of past council conversations we've had and meetings with our transit master plan, it's just, it's always been kind of an emphasis to want to get more transit opportunities to that part of the town. And it's always been challenging to figure that out and to make that work. And obviously with more development and stuff, it does, it does make that, I think, a lot more, um, possible. Uh, councillor Sheldon.
Before I go, um, I, I'd like to hear what, uh, Dawn has to say about that. He seemed pretty eager to say something real quick.
I was just gonna say the comp plan talks about linking transit to high dread, high res, high density residential areas. So I mean, it's not, it's not necessarily all the way to a TODD, but inherent in high density should be transit.
Disagree.
Can I go now? I'm sorry.
Yeah, of course. Yeah.
Uh, so yeah, so the transportation, I think, is kind of key. And I, I wanna, for brevity, I wanna echo a lot that Dawn had to say there. Um, you know, I, I have a few things, um, that are kind of there. I feel like, uh, in listening to this whole thing, a-again, I, I am, I'm extremely worried what kind of precedence we are setting, uh, for future. And we have rules and regulations that are designed to, uh, uh, control and to maintain a standard that we desire. By doing this, I feel like we're kind of stepping outside of that a little bit, and we're allowing, um, people to kind of drive this. And I, I'm not really sure if we're, we're getting to the point of where, um, we need to be going with this. I understand that there's, there's the part of tax dollars that, that'll, that'll be eventually come, but there's also a significant cost in the infrastructure that's gonna be placed in. And it's an infrastructure that's already taxed, taxed to a huge degree that we're not able to sustain at the moment. And if we're not able to sustain it at the moment, we gotta start figuring out how we, how we cut our losses a little bit and, and sever uh, that severed artery and stop the flow. And this isn't helping that fact. So I worry about that. Um, the other thing is, you know, we have citizens that live around that area and, and look, I am, I am for the citizen. And I'm, and that's not a campaign slogan. That's nothing. That is what I believe in. That's the reason I ran for council and I'm passionate about that. And I'm not gonna lose that. I think that our citizens need to come first in every decision that we do. And that's our current decisions. Our, I'm sorry, our current citizens, not our, our future. Now, we can have lots of places and we will develop that. Sandy is going to grow. There is zero doubt in my mind about that. It is how we are going to grow. Those are the decisions that we get to make tonight. And we get to actually have a choice in that. And I encourage you all to give a lot of thoughtful decision about this. Carl, I heard you say that there's no houses in Sandy under three hundred and fifty thousand. You go over to Champion Way and there's one over there for three sixty-one. So these houses are likely not gonna be under three fifty. It's not gonna drop the prices of a highly desired area. I understand supply and demand. I'm, I get there. But I also understand that we're not talking about, we're not talking about low income housing and we're not talking about bringing in a population that's kind of needed. We're talking about increasing our supply. That's, we have a demand and that's just gonna get eaten up. It's not gonna really change that very much. So I, I, I really stress that. And I want to matter, it does matter to the people that live over there that bought it thinking that we heard testimony that one of them thought it was going to be R1. He or she or they, whatever they, whoever it is, expected to have single family homes behind them. Not apartments, not townhouses, single family homes. And these are, these are citizens that paid for Mount Hood views that get to live that. And why, why are we gonna take that away from them when we get to control it? Um, and so, and the last thing is transportation. Look, we, we don't have, the, the transportation just isn't set up. And, and all the infrastructure that we keep talking about and why we need the needed, or the the low income housing and all that, the, the infrastructure that, that, that is needed there is on the other side of town. Things like Fred Myers, links to the, um, to Max or, or I'm sorry, uh, Transit. All the stuff that we need, like I totally agree with Jeremy. This is, this is a great idea if it was somewhere else on, than other than that location. So while I fully support the fact that we need to build additional housing and we're going to build additional housing, I really want us to be thoughtful and think, and think through about where we place that housing. And while sometimes we don't get a choice in that, this time we do. And so I really want, that is what is on my mind. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Appreciate it. Uh, councillor Walker.
Hi, thank you. Um, and I was about ready to, um, pull a Jeremy and start crying, Jeremy, when you were saying such nice things about those questions. I really, it does, you know, I know I'm new at this and I know I ask a lot of questions and I seem to upset some people by my pointed questions, but I, I do appreciate you saying that, you know, those help everybody become more informed because it helps me a lot. And I thank you for saying that. Um, the question about the transit, I, I do want to kind of respond to that because I was a little bit, I, 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 you know, went to meetings about the transit and our buses used to go out past, uh, like over towards, you know, seven eleven and, you know, uh, Langenstedt, I don't know if it went to Langenstedt, but it used to go over there to the east side of town. And, and with our last update that we did, the buses don't go anywhere east of, um, the, uh, the transit center, you know, the, the thing there by City Hall with the fish. It doesn't, because they can't make their routes into Gresham if they try to go pick up those extra routes out there. So that's kind of, you know, what it's proposed. So I don't know what, putting a bus stop out there if, if the bus isn't gonna go pick people up, or maybe there's some other plan that I'm not aware of, but that's my understanding of the transit as it stands now. And I know they've got a new plan, so maybe that's changed. But that's what I know about it now. Um, this, like I said before, the, um, the looks of these houses are beautiful. I love the, the, you know, use of the wood and the sandy style. It's just right up my alley. And, um, the only thing though is that what, what looks good on paper doesn't always kind of translate when you start putting so many things in here with so many variances. And I'm gonna call them variances because, you know, but for a PD, those things would have to be variances. And, um, that's where I, you know, the intent of this PD is that you have a, um, village plan, which is already identified as something fairly high density, you know, some high, some medium, maybe a little low and some commercial. And, and then a PD is intended to kind of go in there and kind of refine it and, you know, move the commercial over here because that's better or, or group things or mix it up, whatever. That's kind of the original intent of the PD is to kind of take something that's already zoned for fairly high density and kind of refine it. But that's not what's happening here. And honestly, like I said, I love the way it looks, but what's happening here that I see is that and it is, you know, eighty percent, almost eighty percent, I was gonna say seventy-nine percent of these lots are going to be small and are gonna be forty foot wide. Or they're gonna be multifamily, or they're gonna be attached housing. And, um, they're, you know, some, a lot of them are twenty foot. They're less than forty foot. Let me put it that way. And what we hear, and I'm all about what Rich said with residents, you know, what we hear from the residents, and actually I've heard it from the councillors too, is there's not enough parking. Look at the Vista Loop down there. Now, I get it. The, the developer was saying that, oh no, they meet the specs for parking. Well, I don't know, but, you know, I don't know if we just have a lot of cars or we have big trucks or what it is. But, you know, parking is the number one complaint that I hear from residents in these higher density neighborhoods. You see it down at Vista Loop. And so there's not enough parking. I've heard, I think it was, uh, councillor Smallwood or one of the others say that, you know, those twenty-eight foot streets with parking on either side, you know, you got eight foot of parking on either side. That's sixteen feet. So that leaves you um, like twelve feet of a roadway, which when you're going along and all of a sudden, you know, you got somebody coming at you, somebody's gotta back up. And so I, you know, I think that the roads, the way they're designed for the amount of traffic you're gonna have in here are also kind of an issue. I, what I really want to see, I, and, and, and I, you know, I don't mean to bring anything new information in, but we're getting a hundred and thirty-six apartments built, you know, along Ruben Lane here that just got approved and they're coming online this year. They'll start breaking ground, I'm sure. And so I'm thrilled to see those apartments. We need those apartments. We need more of those kinds of things. We need some, you know, high density, multifamily townhomes. I want, you know, the Bell Street thing is a perfect spot. That, that whole thing is zoned for, you know, high and medium density there. And that's where it needs to go. And I guess the question I have for these developers is why, why aren't we developing these areas that are already zoned for this high density? Why are we taking you know, areas that are kind of out on the edge, single family residential and trying to turn them into, you know, something they're not? It just, it, it, it kind of just frustrates me because I just feel like we could all meet so many of, all of our collective objectives of trying to provide this range of housing and affordable housing. We already have a lot of that area zoned. And if, and, and and the big thing that I'm gonna say is that, you know, when we've already kind of taken these SFR areas and zoned them as high or built them out as high, we don't have the opportunity to go take something that we zoned as high and say, hey, we want to change your land designation back to SFR. That's a takings under the Dolan Act. And we, you know, if they didn't want And we, you know, if they didn't want to do that, they would have a case against us. And so my concern is when we keep up zoning these SFR or low density areas and not developing the areas that we already have zoned for this, that we lose that balance and we lose our flexibility to meet all those needs. The other thing that kind of disturbs me is the number of variances that, again, variances except for the fact that they're PDs. You know, reducing the lot sizes, the setbacks for the yards on the side and all, that, you know, that affects your privacy. That affects your, people have these RVs. They got boats. You know, you see you walk down any neighborhood here and people have, you know, crap in their side yards, sheds and everything else. And, you know, that's just the way it is. And so, you know, when we try to kind of skimp on these setbacks, which are intended to provide some more livability and let people have those things, those are the kind of complaints where we're going to have people coming in saying, we want to, you know, widen our driveway or widen our, you know, build, do things like that. So for all those reasons, I guess I love the looks of this, how it looks on paper. But I'm really concerned that the actual build out of this would be a pretty big nightmare with, you know, with not enough parking, you know, not enough, you know, just too many, too much and too many variances or, you know, sliding on meeting the intent of those. You know, you say, well, that's quantitative. Yes, we can do quantitative. But the whole intent of a quantitative thing is to make, meet a qualitative livability standard. And, you know, and what I'd like to see us in the future do is when we do look at those kinds of variances, let's have that analysis in our staff reports about what does that mean? What's the intent of that number? And what happens when we take it down by half or a third or whatever? Again, I thank you for giving Tracy the time to answer all my questions. I really appreciate that. I'll try to do better next time. And yeah, that's kind of how I feel overall about it.
Thank you. Kelly, I see your hand up.
I was just going to remind everybody that we need to keep in mind of the criteria within the code and not relate this proposal to other apartments that are being proposed in town. Because I think that's getting outside the scope of what you should be reviewing tonight. I think the majority of what Kathleen said was fine. I just wanted to remind everybody that you need to review this proposal against the code criterion and not against other proposals that are being proposed within the city limits. And I think Chris unmuted himself too, so I don't know if he wanted to add something.
Just to reiterate that, your decision tonight whether to approve or deny has to be based on the criteria that apply to the application. So, yeah.
Just one thing I want to clarify because there was a little back and forth on it is, I think I speak for a couple of us when we love the questions. We think there should be a lot of questions. In fact, a lot of us were willing to allow for time for those questions at our, at our last meeting. It was said at that last meeting, I have 25 questions. I have 25 questions that I want to answer. I want to ask. And then we all went like, whoa. Because we all have some of our own questions. And so we delayed the process at that point. And at that point, we came up with a time for eight hours that we would submit questions. And we're like, oh, I don't know if I can meet that, even though you said 25 questions. But you had them right there on your piece of paper. And then you couldn't do it in 48 hours. It took two weeks. So let's just be very clear on what people are upset about. We have no problem with people asking questions and needing to get answers. But incredibly disrespectful to the rest of us when it feels like it's delay tactics or that is tactics just to go against a proposal and not being done in good faith. There are several counselors on here that I disagree with all the time. But I feel like when they ask their questions, they're asking for the right reasons, that they want to get the right answers. They want to get answers to their questions because they're really thoughtfully thinking through it. And when they ask for more time, we give them more time because we believe they need more time. But we're starting to lose faith in counselors doing different items to try to prolong processes and stuff. And if you're feeling frustration, I think that, I just want to be clear, that's where it's coming from. I see a hand up from Counselor Sheldon.
Yeah, I have a question for our attorney. So I keep hearing, I'm getting kind of mixed signals in the last meeting, and I believe in this one. My understanding was that we had discretion in this, that a PD is a discretionary tool that the city can use to gain some, to allow a deviation from the normal code to gain something, right? But then I keep hearing this, I heard it from Kelly and I just heard it from you, that we got to evaluate this based on our criteria. And so I'm really looking for guidance on just that subject. Can you help me with that? I'm new. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that's a good question. And it's one that's going to follow you around in land use for the next five to 10 years, is my guess. The statute that I was describing to Counselor Hokinson earlier, 197.307, it's one of the needed housing statutes, says that the city can only apply clear and objective criteria to a development application for residential development. Right? Only apply clear and objective criteria. So when you look at the criteria in this case, and those are in 17.64.100 C, one of them says assure consistency with the intent of this chapter. Well, what the heck does that mean? That is not clear and objective. So if this was a standard subdivision application, you would be prohibited from applying that criterion. But because this is a PD, the developer chose to apply for a discretionary approval, not the clear and objective approval. So you can apply criteria that are discretionary. That does not mean you have discretion to decide, to make a decision based on whatever you like. You can't deny it because you're concerned about its effect on property values or because you think the window frames are ugly or because of school capacity. You can't, it doesn't mean that you have the discretion to make any decision you want. What it means is that you can apply criteria that are discretionary. But your final decision still has to be based on those criteria. You have to be able to point to a criterion and say, I don't think the application meets this criterion because. And then explain why you think it doesn't meet the criterion. So you're not limited to clear and objective criteria. That's good. You can apply discretionary criteria. That's good. But you still have to identify, be able to identify a criterion that you think the application does not meet.
And that was kind of my point of saying that while it may or may not be true that there's a certain amount of apartments being built potentially around town, that has no bearing on your quasi judicial decision making tonight. What I was trying to get at. Like you can't relate those two things like, oh, we might have 136 apartments built. Therefore, we don't need anymore and therefore we should deny this. That would, that would not be an appropriate way to make a finding essentially.
And when you look at, it's not as, it's not maybe the handcuffs that you think it is. When you look at criterion, it's 1764.100 C, there are only three, and one of them says, when located in a village. And this is not located in a village, so that one doesn't even apply. So you've only got really those two criterion. But both of them include other standards by reference. So C2, for example, says you have to ensure compliance with the development standards. Well, okay, so there are a lot of development standards. And maybe you think the application doesn't meet one of those and you could deny on that basis. So even though it looks like there are only two criterion, C1 and C2, each one of those in fact brings in other standards by reference. So that's really the universe of the standards you have to use to make your decision whether to approve or deny. If you think it meets all of those standards, the general provisions, the development standards, the intents, you know, one or more of the intent statements at the beginning of the PD chapter. If it meets all those things, then approve it. If there's one that you think it doesn't meet, tell us and we'll write the findings.
So I guess can the, can this, my question is, can the zoning be the fact that we're stepping out of our zoning? Is that something that we can consider?
The PD is intended to do that, to allow you to do that. The PD is there so you're not stuck with exclusively single family residential. If the person, if the property owner, the developer only wanted to build single family residential, you wouldn't need the PD. So the reason that we're talking about a PD is in the first place is the developer wants to build something more or different than what is allowed in the single family zone.
Okay. Thank you.
So I guess here's a question for you, Chris. Then why wouldn't every developer want to do a PD and just build whatever the heck they want?
Well, because maybe what you, you think that the market, a lot of developers have one product, right? And they build single family. That's what they build. They're not interested in building multifamily. That's, you know, that's what they do. So they want to build multifamily. Or maybe they don't want to worry about whether or not they're going to get approved. So they just go under the clear and objective path. And there's very little discretion. You pretty much, if they meet the setbacks and the street widths, you have to approve it. You don't have any discretion. So there are a lot of reasons, more and more developers frankly, just, you know, when faced with discretionary decision making, just throw up their hands and say, I'm not even going to risk it. I'm just going to apply for a straight subdivision. Or, you know, D.R. Horton is not much interested frankly in building multifamily. They build single family. So if D.R. Horton came in and bought the same property, you'd get an application for single family because that's what they build. So, you know, every developer is different and I don't pretend to be able to describe the full universe or spectrum of developers. But they're, you know, they're all motivated by different reasons. So the answer to the question, why would somebody? Well, there are a lot of different reasons.
And the other reason too is that a lot of planned developments like this one before you tonight has a lot of open space. And I'm sure that will be a huge selling point to the prospective buyers is that, hey, look, you're buying into this place with all this open space and all this parkland and everything that we're creating at the same time as the development. You're not going to be in a situation where you had to wait 10 to 20 years for the city to develop a park like in Deer Point Park where there still isn't anything developed. And so I think part of it also is kind of a selling point. And the only way for them to get as many units as the zone allows with also providing all that open space is to have smaller lot sizes and to do some of the things that they're requesting through this PD application. So that might also be a thing that they're trying to sell this to a different group of individuals that want open space and want parkland and want meandering paths and want viewpoints. And so this is a way to accomplish that.
Counselor Walker.
This question for Chris. So if somebody wanted to vote no on this, is it my, is it my responsibility to kind of come up for the rationale and the code and all that? Or is that something that the staff and the attorney are supposed to do?
Much as I would like to make your decisions for you, well, no, I wouldn't even.
I'm making the decision. You're just coming up with the, you know.
I don't, I can't put myself in your shoes and say why you want to approve or deny this. You have to tell us.
Any further discussion? Are we ready for a motion or are we at everybody? Like we've all kind of said our piece. Counselor Exner.
Go ahead. I'm ready to make a motion, but go ahead, Dawn. You got a question?
Because I, I will confess, I was confused about this process. So I talked to Jeff today about the mechanics of how did these things go? And if we were to vote against this, to Chris's point, we need to identify those, those key things that we think, you know, it does not meet. To that end, before we vote, what I would propose is that we collect those things we think don't meet so that it's pretty clear then when it comes time to a vote that we disagree with that list or we do agree with that list so that we give staff the appropriate material to draft that opinion. Is that reasonable?
Sure.
So here's what I was going to propose is that we've got about three, four things here that are outside of what I hear all the rest of the counselor have conversation about. We've got the variations with what the staff is calling variations, what the staff is calling deviations. And then really the multi-house, multi-properities are really the big things on the list. And I guess in reaction to what you're talking about, Counselor, is I would suggest that we say, take a straw poll. Do we all agree, disagree, someplace in between the multi? Do we all take a straw poll on the deviations? And you can even list them if you want to, the block lengths, the square feet of the properties, the setbacks and so on. Or, and then there's the last one, and those are the variations, I think, that we talk about the face of the properties and the sidewalk, those two variations. So I propose that we maybe take a straw poll and then we, once we figure out what that looks like, so it is some sort of conversation with the seven of us that we build a motion from that. So I would propose that we, I'll just be brave. I don't know how this is going to work out. I make a motion that we approve the multi-housing portions of this PD. And let's see what happens.
You want to start, you just want to start with the multifamily?
Can you even do that? Question is, it's a whole plan, not just individual pieces of it. So.
I mean, because I think, how does this look like normally?
Well, the reality is that you have a single application in front of you and you have to, the application seeks many different approvals, but it's a consolidated application. And the parts are independent, interdependent on each other. So I'm not sure you can approve it sequentially. It's, you know, for better or worse, it's an all or nothing sort of decision.
I thought at the original, and correct me if I'm wrong, Shelley, the original slide had like five different motions that we could approve. Everything from straight up denial to saying, hey, this is what we don't like. Come back later. Did I misunderstand that side?
Um, so those are possible motions, but all of them relate to the entire application. Some of them relate to putting additional conditions onto the application. But all of the possible motions that Mr. Cream came up with relate to the entire application.
So for example, the staff report suggests, recommends approving it and then lists a bunch of conditions of approval. You may think that, also think that it should be approved, but there are additional conditions of approval you would add. So that would be one motion. Or you could move to approve but eliminate some of the conditions. You could continue the hearing. That's a motion. But that's going to carry substantial legal risk if you do that. So the, you know, there were five options, but all of them dealt with the application as a whole.
I just wanted to add, so there might, there might be some confusion because the planning commission had a list. That list was just intended to help you with your decision making. That list was not intended to say like, oh, you could pick and choose which ones to approve and deny. So if there was some confusion from that, from the staff report, I apologize. But that list was meant to just give you an idea of their thoughts on those different items.
Counselor Exner.
Could we get Shelley to put those five voting options on the screen? So if I can take a look at them and maybe we can pick one that would apply. We got to move forward and make a decision tonight somehow. There we go.
Yeah, they're on the screen. Just take a second. Everybody read through. So guys, I mean, just to be blunt, I think options D and E are off the table. This basically leaves us with A, B, and C.
You're muted. Done.
Mayor, can I ask a question for counsel? Not our counsel, legal counsel, sorry. What happens, what happens if we deny what, and we pick some criteria? What's next? What are the possible ramifications to the city should the applicant not be real happy with it?
So there are really three options, three likely scenarios. One is nothing, right? They just walk away. Probably not likely. The second. The second option is they could appeal the city's decision to the land use board of appeals and argue that the city's decision was wrong for any number of reasons. The third option is they could come back and submit a new application for a different design that is, would likely be just a clear and objective path. They, it would be a straight subdivision, minimal scrutiny and minimal discretion that the city could exercise over it. It would just be a, a straight subdivision under the S F R zoning. So those are the three options, really a clear and objective application for a straight subdivision, a, an appeal to the land use board of appeals or conceivably the do nothing option that they would just do nothing, which I think unlikely.
Okay, so a follow-up question to that then. If we were to approve with a significant restriction, like no multifamily housing, when that's appealed, would they throw it out completely? Or would they line item, when, when, when that appeal is made, is it adjusted on a line item by line item basis or all or nothing?
I'm not sure you could approve it, but without the multifamily, I, the application, I mean, without the multifamily, all your densities are, are change, different. And I, I don't, I mean, I, I don't think you can approve it. I'll defer to Kelly here, at least seek some guidance, but I don't think it can, you can approve it without the multifamily. What happens to that portion of the development? What happens to those units? It's a completely different project without the multifamily. So I think the options would be the same. You'd either get appealed because it's effectively a denial, or the applicant would just turn around and come back in with a straight subdivision.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay, Counselor Smallwood.
So, you know, I just want to add, I, I, I think this is a good project and I think some of you guys are, for whatever reason, in your, in your minds, you don't like the project. I've listened to a lot of reasons tonight, but you can't find the one that you can, you can say no to. And, and in my mind, that's because this is a good project. You may not like it, you may not like some of the components of it. But it's a good project and I, and I think it's good for Sandy. And my vote's going to be for option A. If you're trying to get kind of where people are sitting, Carl, is to accept the project with the planning commission's recommendation. So there's where I'm at.
Is that a motion? That motion, Counselor Smallwood?
Here, I'll make a motion that we go with option A, which is to accept the project with the recommendations from the planning commission.
Let me see a second. We have a motion on the floor by Counselor Smallwood, a second by Counselor Exner to go with option A to adopt the right, well, to just move forward and, and approve the application. Jeff, why don't we go with a roll call vote? It looks like I have a point of order question, Counselor Hokinson.
Thank you. I'm not sure whether the motion was to approve the application or to approve the application with the changes and staff recommendations.
Thank you.
The motion is to approve the application with the recommendations of the planning commission, which was option A.
Thank you. Okay, so that's, that's the motion and the second on the floor. Jeff, can we do a roll call vote?
So Pete's old?
No.
That's for Smallwood?
Yes.
Counselor Sheldon?
No.
Counselor Walker?
No.
Counselor Exner?
Yes.
Counselor Hokinson?
No.
Mayor Pulliam?
Yes.
Mayor, that's three yeses and four nos.
Thank you, Jeff. I saw a hand up from Counselor Pete's old.
Yeah, I was just going back to the comment I made earlier, and this would be to Chris there on those proposals. So those, on the criteria is just in what we find that doesn't meet the standards, not the fact that the other parts of our comp plan or that this is single family zoning that is changing in the outskirts of our, of our city in its locations out there, changing all of that single family to be a mixed use of densities, I guess you'd say, in that particular area there. So it's just by the criteria of the things that were given us to decide on from the planning commission, is that correct? Or from the alternates of the rest of the code? Not the code that you're telling us we aren't able to decide on, is that correct?
So i- it's counterintuitive, but you just have to assume that your comprehensive plan does not apply, period, full stop. The code applies and the P D is is evidence that the city council at some point made a policy decision that the base zones could be altered in ways consistent with the P D criteria. Because the, as the intent statement suggests, there are reasons that you might want to allow flexibility in all of the base zones, even those on the periphery. And that policy decision is embodied in the, the, the P D criteria. So the, 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 the end of the day, you're stuck with a criteria in the development code. Your comprehensive plan just does not apply.
You said, we may want to, but if we don't want to, the opposite of may want to. Is that not its own decisionability?
Again, you're not allowed to.
They, they said may.
You, you have to make a decision based on the criteria, right? So if you want to deny it, you have to be able to identify criteria and the application does not meet.
See some hands up, scope. I, I don't think your hand, you mean to have your hand up, right, Counselor Smallwood? Does that steal up from the last time you went? Okay, Counselor Walker and then Kelly.
Go ahead, Kelly. I'll, I'll wait.
I was just going to say, if you're looking at the first criterion in seventeen sixty-four one hundred, I believe how our legal counsel has interpreted it is it doesn't say you must meet all intents. So I think therefore, if it meets one of the intents, I don't believe you can say, well, it doesn't, you know, if it meets one intent, I believe it meets that criterion is how I read it. I just wanted to remind everybody of that. So there's like seven or eight listed. You could probably easily make a finding that one or two of them maybe not be met. But I don't, I don't think you can make a finding that all of them are not met, not with a straight face. I would really have a hard time writing that fine.
I disagree with you and counsel on that. And I would point out, the applicant's counsel disagreed with you and counsel on that.
So Counselor Hokinson, what, what we, my, my advice at the last meeting and my written advice in response to your questions were, were the same, and that is that, that criterion in one hundred C one, that you have to ensure consistency with the intent section, means that you have to be able to identify at least one of those intents that is met by the application. Not that all nine apply, because it's impossible for any application to meet all nine. The ninth one is, it only applies in business zones. The first two only apply in village zones. It's simply not possible for any application anywhere in the city to comply with all nine intent statements. So how do you give effect to the standard in one hundred point C one? You do that by saying an application has to meet one or more of those intent statements. It's, you can't ignore the one, the intent section. And I, I don't, I hope I've never advised that you can simply ignore the intent section. But it's not by itself an independent approval criterion. It's only there by reference in one hundred C one.
And my point being that staff and legal counsel have to write your findings if you ultimately decide tonight to deny it. So we need to know why you think all of those criterion are not being met. If you choose to use the intent section as your reasoning, that's my point.
I'm ready to go. I'm going to make a motion that we deny this application based on seventeen point six four point zero zero D and E. Promoting flexibility in site planning and architectural design placement and clustering of structures and providing for efficient use of public facilities and energy. And the other two ones I'm going to point out are, I have to click over to my other one, seventeen point six four point one hundred, C one and C two. That the that it doesn't assure consistency with the intent of this chapter. And it, it assured, it doesn't assure compliance with the general provisions, development standards and application provisions of this chapter.
Counselor Hokinson?
I wish to modify that motion and extend it one further and suggest that the applicant did not meet the, the requirement set forth in seventeen sixty-four thirty under development standards, where it's subtitled, the variation from development codes standards generally. The very first sentence says, the development standards of the base zone, overlay zone, or plan development overlay apply. At the point in time that we are reviewing this, there is no plan development overlay. It doesn't exist yet. Therefore, the development standards that should be applied are that of the base zone or if there was an overlay zone, but there isn't, so it's the base zone. So I move that we extend and, and add that to Kathleen's list of things that the applicant has failed to meet. Because the units that proposed are not allowed under the base zone.
Are you okay with that being added on to your motion, Counselor Walker?
Mayor.
Did you say yes?
Yes, yes, Mayor, if it, if it's, you know, if Chris, the legal, legal city attorney thinks that's okay, I, I could support that, thank you.
Yes, if you could clarify for me, why you think it doesn't meet those intent standards in the intent section, statements D and E?
Counselor Hokinson, I think that, oh.
I believe that was for Counselor Walker.
Yes, Counselor Walker.
Yeah, the criteria was promoting flexibility in site planning and architectural design placement and clustering of structures. My concern is that when you pack so many units into this area and this, this higher density, you're not going to have a lot of flexibility as far as trying to find a parking spot or trying to, you know, enjoy your small lot. And I think that the things are clustered too close together. And yeah, I don't think it gives us the flexibility. So that's D. E is providing efficient use of public facilities and energy. Again, that goes to the fact that the, you know, these kind of things are intended to kind of be located close to transit, close to stores and things like that. And those, you know, the library, those kind of public facilities and, and transit things. And it's, it's not that. So, you know, we can't even, yeah, so, so that's that part regarding C one and C two. Hold on, I got to get to my notes.
Kathleen, while you, while you look for that, can I, can I just ask a quick question? Chris, can you also just kind of maybe, because we do have some new counselors here, that should the applicant decide that if this gets denied, that they want to go to Luba, what that process is?
Yeah, I'll answer that while Counselor Walker is looking at, at her notes.
Thank you.
Any decision you make, positive or negative, there's a twenty-one day period that anyone who participated at the city council of the planning commission can appeal the decision to the land use board of appeals. Then if nothing else happens, there's a twenty-day period the city has to file the record. Then another twenty-one day period for the appellant to file an opening brief, another twenty-one days for the city to respond. So there's like a forty-two day briefing period and ultimate, then oral argument, and then ultimately a decision. The whole process takes about oh, four, five months from when the appeal is filed to when we get a decision from Luba. So, and, and it's, you know, you're looking at low five figures probably in terms of, of a hit on your legal budget. If the city chooses to defend it.
Doesn't the record stay open as well, just to add on to that? If, for, but, but for council comments and stuff can be brought into the Luba court that are made after the case?
Now, Luba is essentially looking at the evidence that was, that you used to make your decision, right? So anything that, that came in after the rec, well, anything that came in after the record was closed, you can't consider. And so Luba's not going to look at it. They want to know what you based your decision on. So any information that comes in after you make your decision doesn't matter and Luba is not interested.
Yeah, well, I, I just would point that maybe we should talk to advisor, Mr. Delfman of that sense. As a counsel, we were advised the exact opposite of that and told to keep our mouths shut after the Bailey Meadows development deal, so.
Well, you, I mean, if it comes out later that people are, there's like evidence of bias or ex parte communications that were not disclosed, absolutely, that, that will get the decision remanded.
But I'm talking statements that happen immediately after the decision. So I've just, so I've just, you know, it's very frustrating. It's very frustrating when as counselors, you want to, you know, talk to your community members about decisions that are made or aren't, and you decide not to based on legal guidance that you're provided. And then you hear, you know, six months later that you could have, it becomes, becomes rather frustrating. And it's different attorney, different, different counsel, but it's frustrating.
Well, that, there may be, I, I don't know the questions that were presented to David. And there may be good legitimate reasons for not openly discussing your decision after the fact. But Luba, I can tell you, Luba does not care how you explain your decision to your constituents. They want to know what you, what you based your decision on.
Thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I wanted to make sure to get back to Counselor Walker, Walker.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, I know staff, myself, Chris and Shelley are trying to write stuff up right now. So I need to know what C one and C two you're referring to, Counselor Walker.
No, that's in, that's in subsection one hundred, Kelly.
Okay.
Oh, you're, you're muted, Counselor Walker.
Yes, seventeen point six four point one hundred, C one, C two. And, and it's also, I'm just going to throw out here, you know, and, and ask the question, I guess, of, of seventeen point six four point one hundred, you know, B talks about staff evaluation. The director shall prepare a report that evaluates whether the conceptual development plan applies with every review criteria flow or below. The report shall also include a recommendation for approval or denial, and if needed, a list of conditions. Somewhere in here, I, you know, I don't know the code like you guys do, but there was a, a section in here that said that our options were that this was a discretionary decision and we could deny it. And that said, you know, and so, and so wherever that is, it's somewhere in the code, because I kind of recall reading it, but I can't put my hand on it right away. Give me a little more time, I guess. The criteria that you had asked me to explain was assuring consistency with the intent of this chapter. Again, you know, the intent of this chapter overall is generally for village zones. It's not, not to say that it's, you know, exclusively village zones, but the intent, the overall intent of this chapter is not being met. It's not consistent with the overall intent. And it doesn't ensure compliance with the general provisions, development standards and application provisions of this chapter. And, you know, regarding, responding to what was said earlier about things was, you know, I don't think this is a great subdivision development. It's, it's not something I really, you know, think is great. And I honestly think that we have, you know, we, I, I hope they come back and propose something else, because I think, you know, I, I'm interested in seeing it get developed. I'm just, you know, this isn't the right solution for that piece of land, I think.
I'm interested in seeing what kind of development plan can get passed by this council.
Meet the zone, meet the code.
That makes two of us.
Yeah.
Meet the zone, meet the code. I'm even willing to consider variances, you know, if they make sense and, and all that.
Hey, hey, I'm not, I'm not the one that says, you know, I'm, I'm for it when it makes sense, against it not, and vote against it every time. That's not, that's not, that's doing that.
And the comment on the.
I'm just going to say, all this trash talking about me is getting, you know, I, I want to get where I can kind of get through a meeting and not be kind of insulted and talked, you know, it's, it's just not very helpful. And I'm going to try to do better to try to get through a meeting where I don't get that. But I don't have unlimited patience about that. And I want to be treated just like everybody else is being treated. Don Hokinson had at least twenty-five questions. In fact, half of my twenty-five questions were answered by him. So that said, I'll shut up and let you guys.
That makes two of us. I, I'm waiting for the respect as well. And Counselor Hokinson asked his questions.
If we're going to do a motion, let's do it.
Yeah, I'm there.
But before, before that, can, we're, we're going way off track. Hey, let's get, come on. So real quick though, hey, you know, last meeting, we had our attorney sat there and, and correct me if I'm wrong. I could very well be wrong.
correct me if I'm wrong, I could very well be wrong, but the, the applicant's attorney, Mr. Robinson, specifically said, went right down this, you have to follow this criteria if it doesn't meet all, any one of these intents. And our attorney interjected. Am I, am I misunderstanding that and said that that wasn't the case?
That, that's correct.
Okay, so you're, I got to admit, sir, you're confusing the crap out of me. I, I'm like, do we have to have intent or not? Like, because I, I'm getting frustrated, because I am so confused right now, that this doesn't make sense. So just answer this and put it in, to put it in stupid mode for Richard Sheldon. And that is, if one of those criteria on the intent are met by their plan, are we obligated to say yes to this planned development? That simple.
You could conclude from that that it complies with criteria one hundred C one. One hundred C two is a different criterion. There are only one of those criterion deals with the intent, but there are at least two criterion.
Okay, so, but what I'm understanding, and again, if I'm wrong, please tell me that it keeps coming back to this intent, there's more than two intent there, because I just looked it up, there's, I think, seven or eight different things there.
Nine.
And, not, thank you. And what you're saying is if they meet one of those things, we have to say yes to this, or else we risk losing it in Luba. A substantial risk, not either. I'm not talking like, you know, it could go either way down, the ump could just call it either way, that's a different thing. I'm saying there's case law to substantiate that this will be a losing case in Luba.
I, I'm not going to try to guarantee any particular outcome at Luba until we know what the decision is.
Is there a case law that says if you meet one intent on criteria, one criteria intent, that you are obligated to allow this development?
My, my statement two weeks ago was that you cannot apply all nine of those intent. If one interpretation, and I think a reasonable interpretation of the PD sections in their entirety, is that it has to meet at least one of them.
Okay, Mr. Robinson.
Your interpretation is different, it's your code. You tell us what your interpretation is.
So I, but you know what, my, so I understand what I'm reading, but what I interpreted before, I think, is a miscommunication between my legal counsel and that. And that is, Mr. Robinson said, we meet four of these criteria, or whatever it was. And because you guys meet four of these, you're obligated to say yes. And an attorney on our side interjected and said, eh, that's not true. And so that's where, that's where, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm getting frustrated, because I'm starting to hear counselors and mayors argue back and forth, and, and all I want to know is if this, if that is the clear and objective standard, that it has to meet one of those criteria, and if it fails, we will lose it in Luba and cost the city five digits, or seven digits, or six digits, whatever it is, I think it was six or seven, in legal fees, I need to know that answer. And we're making motions prematurely, because we haven't fully got to that answer yet. And that's what I'm looking for, because I, I didn't even want to vote on that damn thing that just came forward, because I don't understand, I'm getting mixed signals from this, and I just need some clarification.
So, Counselor Sheldon, if I'm responsible for your miss, for your confusion, I apologize. But it, it's, it comes down to two sentences, well, really, one sentence. That sentence in C one, you have to assure consistency with the intent of this chapter. What does that mean, to assure consistency with? I can tell you what I think it means. I can give you a reasonable legal interpretation of what that means. At the end of the day, it's up to you guys to tell us what you think that means. I don't think you can reasonably say it means all nine, because if you read all nine, there's no way in God's green earth that any project could ever meet all nine. So it can't be that. So what is it? Something less than nine? Is it four, like Mr. Robinson said? Is it one? You tell us. But it comes down to the language of that one sentence, and how, what, how it relates to the intent section. You don't apply the intent section directly. There's nothing in that section zero zero that says these intent standards apply to a development in PD. There's nothing in there that says that. Where you get to the intent section is through the language of one hundred point C one. And so you guys have to tell us what you think that means.
Point of order, the, what, what I heard you say is that there's two tracks. One is clear and objective, and the other one is discretionary. And we don't have to meet clear and objective, this is a discretionary decision.
These are discretionary standards, they're discretionary standards.
And we, and we can make our decisions based on discretion, discretionary standards. So what we have at this point is we have three, three or four different code languages, plus I didn't catch the one that Don added on there, something about thirty. So now we have four different mentions, what was the name of it?
It was section thirty, so, I apologize, seventeen sixty-four dot thirty, section.
I'm just going to be very honest, we're the ones writing it up, we're going to have to bring this order back to council, because I, we'll have to take a first stab at it, and then you guys will have to modify it. I, there's just not been enough clear direction from me to comfortably just pass it on to one person like Mayor Polium, and have him make a decision for the entirety of the council. I think.
I honestly wish your code language was a little bit, you know, gave us a little bit more to work with, but it really doesn't, so it's really hard.
I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just saying.
It's not your fault, I don't mean.
Write the code, Kelly, write the code, you know, let's just pause, point of order, no one's been called on. Counselor Hockenson?
Thank you, Mayor. Our, my apologies, Chris, obviously, we are causing you some stress, and Kelly as well. I think, I would like to try to put out a different motion, but I'd like to phrase it first, talk it through. I feel like, given what I've listened from Richard and for Chris, that if we were to deny strictly on intent, we are, we are in a, we're not, that's not a battle we're going to win, okay? That's just because the intent are too vague, too, and it's, it would be easy for somebody to show that anything meets at least one of them. So it would be very difficult. So I, I agree with, with Chris in this regard. I do think, and I'm open to getting talked out of this, but if under seventeen sixty-four thirty, the development standards of the base zone are not met in many cases. We have different kinds of units that are not allowed under the base, we have offsets that are not allowed under the base, whether as a conditional or an outright permitted use. So we have a number of specific adjustments from the SFR underlying base. And I think that is a standard that is not met. In fact, the code goes on to say that unless they are superseded by the standards of this chapter, and there's only one place where you could argue, that I think where that standard could be argued, and it's weak, it's the one I mentioned earlier, where it just lists the various uses for residential zones, but it still doesn't address the offsets and all the other variances that are being asked for. Or they are modified during the planned development review, which I assume this is. So we could accept it all, at which time it's, yeah, we're golden from that point forward. The next person that comes in, if they want to do something on that planned development, there'll be a new overlay, or there'll be a new standard they would look at. But the way I read it right now, to me, that's the, that's the standard that wasn't met. Chris, I give you a chance to comment. Chris, you're muted, Chris.
Thank you, Counselor Hockenson, I appreciate the effort to identify, to really work from the criteria. And as you were talking, it occurred to me also, it's not just seventeen sixty-four, chapter seventeen point sixty-four that, that applies. There are, what, two or three, I, I'm going to use the wrong term, but essentially variances. There's the fish overlay, there are several components to this, and we've been focused on the PD criteria, but there are a host of other criteria that also apply, and if they don't meet those, then the, the application is equally not, not approvable. So if, if you, if you're comfortable denying on the basis of seventeen sixty-four point oh three oh, we can certainly try to prepare some findings to that effect.
I would prefer to add, you know, more things on there, and not just hang our hat on one.
But that, that is a catch-all for everything that didn't meet the underlying SFR zones, or as mentioned, the, the fish, or any of the other requirements.
Counselor Pete Salt? I'm sorry, Counselor Exter's had his hand up, and then I'll, Pete Salt, I apologize.
Yeah, I apologize, I'm trying not to get frustrated here, but, and I've been trying to be very quiet about how the logic is trying to be explained, as to why we do not like a proposal that has been vetted everywhere but Tuesday, to be able to meet all of our standards, all of the requirements that are needed. And I get the part that there is some real angst about portions of this development that you don't like. The trouble is, is you're going to put us into some real legal problem by looking for the most weak, dragging in things that are not very defensible, and you end up with putting us into a place where even though you, you may find something that looks relatively reasonable, a lawyer in front of Luba is going to tear it apart, and we're going to end up having it back here, and a hundred, two hundred thousand dollars worth of fees for our lawyers are going to be thrown into another basket, and we're going to have to relook at it again, or lose it and have to eat it anyway. I think if you could find a place where you got some real teeth in this about why you don't like this one, that disagrees with that code, you've got some logic there, but just putting something out because you think you don't like the fact that it's got certain things in it that you don't like, I think is going to end up putting our council at risk. So I, I, here, here is trying to find things that just are not really in the reasonable concerns about meeting the code.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Pete Salt.
Yeah, I was just going to say that the seventeen sixty-four thirty, I believe, be there would be what the concern that I think we're, we're sharing now, is it version B, or is it seventeen sixty-four thirty as a whole, AMB?
I was referencing A.
So in that intent, is I guess what I was trying to describe without calling the section out in its, originally, in that, that piece of it is what was making me comment earlier, is the seventeen sixty-four thirty A, and its subsections there as well. My opinion.
Counselor Sheldon?
Yeah, so so Chris, for, for one, I apologize for, for getting heated, I'm, it's not, not towards you, it's for the whole situation. But with that being said, so I want to make sure I understand, so once somebody goes this planned development route, sections like seventeen point three four three zero have nothing to do with it, are lot sizes. All of that have nothing to do with it anymore. We're just strictly bound by the new, what they're proposing.
So it does, the, the first part of that sentence in sixty-four point thirty A, the development standards of the base zone, though, it would have to be a development standard that we're talking about in the base zone, like minimum lot size, for example, is development standard. But a density calculation is not a development standard. So there are some things you can modify through the PD process, and other things you cannot, depending on whether or not they're a development standard. I, I don't know if you remember, when I did the training a few weeks ago, I said, land use is very much the land of magical language, and it is. Think, words like development standard have a specific meaning within the code. So in, in that sentence is a great example, you can modify the development standards of the base zone, but not other standards like the density calculation. Does that make sense?
No, I want to make sure, so, like, like, I, I, I'm still, I work every day with attorneys, and I'm still not versed in it yet. So with that being said, though, I, I want to make sure I'm clear, though, things like lot size, I, I, because that is one of the things I disagree with, is we have taken and minimized our lot size down to four thousand square feet, and I think some even smaller, when our, when our standard lots are seventy-five hundred, in, in that residential zone. So that's, that's the kind, I mean, we're sitting here getting all, all crazy, but that's, I mean, if you want something tangible that I'm hung up on, that's it. I want the, the homes in Sandy to have a yard, that families can go out and play in their yard, and, and that, and so that, that's the stuff that I'm concerned about. If it had that, I wouldn't be arguing with anyone, regardless of what some people think.
That, then you're not going to like the PD process, because the PD process is designed to do exact, to provide the flexibility to go above and below those kinds of standards, just to clarify.
But we're, we're mandated to go to the PD standard now that they want that route.
It, it's not, look, they're discretionary standards, and if you can find a standard you, you think they don't meet, then you can deny it. Oh, Counselor Hockenson?
Thanks, I would just, I would just want to go on the record to clarify why I'm passionate about this, so that it's not misrepresented. I don't have anything against this developer, or this development, or new development in general. I am concerned, because I feel like our code has been misinterpreted in the past, I feel like it's more restricted than, than it has been interpreted. And, and I feel like, and maybe I'll be proven wrong, that, that I'm interpreting it incorrectly, fine, but as of now, I believe it is restrictive, maybe it was permissive in the past, that's why I objected to the evidence of other PDs being introduced in the applicant's answers, because there, we don't review this against any other PDs, it stands on its own, and that's what we're reviewing it for. So in my mind, this goes against what was set out, and I know we're not using the comp plan, but, so the comp plan started the thinking, it ended its way into code, we're looking at the code today, we have zones that are underneath it. And those zones are, are, I think, in this one section that I've referenced, I think, are brought back into meaning, they have constraints. I, I agree with the density discussion, but I would also point out that, in general, when density is being discussed in the PD, it's about, you cannot go below the minimum densities. So yes, there is a max density, but there is no mandate to build to the max density, you just cannot go below the minimum. And sometimes, we've been looking at that max like, oh, we have to jam all these things in in this particular format, so we hit the max, but I don't read that in there, to me, it's, it's between those two thresholds.
Thank you, Shelley.
I just have a really quick clarifying question. I've heard a couple of counselors refer to the review criterion seventeen sixty-four one hundred C two, which says, assure compliance with the general provisions, development standards, and application provisions of this chapter. So I'm just thinking of, you know, when I'm writing this up, if we do want to refer to that criterion as having not been met, what specifically of the general provisions, development standards, or application provisions haven't been met, if somebody wants to speak to that?
Well, for starters, what Don said, seventeen point six four point three zero A, but also, I believe, seventeen point six four zero zero D and E.
And Don, does that, does that represent you pretty good?
Yeah.
So, so I mean, where are we? Is that your, is that the motion, then? I mean, we, we haven't voted anything down.
Chris?
Yeah.
You said this gives you enough to go back and write something.
Yeah.
Are we going to, are we just writing a blank check to you to defend us?
No, I, I, I think, as I understand the motion, that the latest iteration of the motion was be to deny the application for failure to comply with seventeen point sixty-four point three oh A, and seventeen point sixty-four point one hundred C one, because the application does not demonstrate that it, it sure, or does not ensure compliance with the intent section.
So is, is that, I mean.
No, I, you know, no, we'll be able to defend it.
I believe also C two, because that, that was the assure compliance with the general provisions, development standards and application provisions of this chapter, so it's kind of a circular argument, but C two, you know, one of those is, is taking you back to sixty-four thirty, so.
And Chris, I had seen in the latest, in my notes, in the latest iteration of the motion, the intent portion had been removed. Perhaps I'm wrong, but that, that's what I had in the latest iteration, that it was just based on thirty A.
Let, let me ask the council then for clarification, councillor Walker, I think you were pretty clear that you did not believe the application has demonstrated it complies with the intent section, so we could find that it doesn't meet one hundred point C one, is that correct?
There were people that it didn't meet, and I, you know, I'm going to leave it to you all, because is it better to have, you know, more rationale than, than less, I, you know, I would think that, you know, you try to get it with everything, you know, all the arrows in your quiver there, but I would, you know, the D and E were the two that I felt like it didn't meet. It's not maybe your strongest thing, then you go back to thirty A and one hundred C one and two.
Well, C, C one is the intent section, right?
Right, well, again, these are circular arguments.
It, it's not a well, it's not a well drafted bit of code, I'll give you that.
Thank you, but you know, and that's where, you know, the intent, I mean, certainly, you know, it may meet, well, I don't know.
Councillor Hockinson.
So I, I feel for you Kathleen, but I feel like we need to drop the intent, and I ask your permission to do so. In that, in that case, I think we have a motion to move forward with the denial based on those other criteria that, that we set for.
Yeah. In that, in that case, I think we have a motion to move forward with the denial based on those other criteria that, that we set for. Yeah, the criteria was?
Can you?
So that would be based, excuse me, councillor, I'm sorry. According to my notes, then, that would be to deny it based on seventeen sixty-four one hundred C two, referring back to seventeen sixty-four thirty A.
And I guess if there's other, yeah, and if there's other things, as you guys are writing this up, like you said, it's not just the sixty-four section, there's a bunch of other, you know, sections of code, I mean, there was like, you know, a hundred and sixty different findings that Shelley did such a great job of find, you know, searching through, and if there's other things in there that, you know, look helpful or, you know, I mean, I, I had a lot of questions about those, when the developer said, well, you know, we're meeting the code, I kind of, you know, I mean, I, I don't take him totally as his word, I'm not saying he's lying, that's just that we can have a different opinion as to whether, you know, he's meeting the code, but if there's something there that you all had a question about that you wanted to, you know, that I don't know if that's something you could do, though, Chris, I don't know, maybe I'm out in front of my headlights.
Yeah. Very quickly, if I started making up your reasons for you.
Mayor, could I modify that, so I, I think I need to get, be a little more specific in what I'm proposing, then. That the reference sections that Jeff brought out, for sure, those are the relevant sections of seventeen sixty-four. However, I think there are specific examples that were identified in the staff report that can be specifically around the, the changes or deviations, I'm going to use the word deviations, so it's not to confuse them with variances, right? Deviations from the underlying zone, which would include but not exhaustive, so there's a whole list in the staff report, including the setbacks, the unit types and so forth. Is that, does that help, Chris?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, so that's the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion by councillor Hockinson, a second by councillor Walker, Jeff, will you please do a roll call vote?
Councillor Smallwood. Councillor Sheldon. Councillor Walker. Councillor Exner. Councillor Hockinson.
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam. Mayor, that's four yeses and three nos.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, moving on.
Before you move on, do you want the final order brought back before you, or do you want, how do you guys want to proceed on that? Typically, mayor Pulliam just signs it, but we need, we need direction on that.
Why would I not just sign it?
Yeah, I don't think we have time anyways.
I move that mayor reviews it and assigns it.
I agree.
Make it as strong as you can, yeah. I guess I'm going to have to put a lot of defense or dependence on Kelly and Chris to make it as strong as possible.
It's going to be Chris.
All right, moving forward, city manager report.
All right, thank you, mayor, a couple of things, the library reopened to the public for browsing today, I think we had about twenty people come through. I think we were one of the first libraries in Clockmouth County, so proud of our librarians and staff on being prepared and being able to do that. And we'll continue to see how that goes, we have hours of browsing windows open throughout the week, every day of the week, so, good news there, we're planning to reopen city hall and other facilities on April first, really just unlocking the doors and continuing business as usual, just not having to do it by appointment now. I think you heard the news about vaccinations, I sent some information, I think an update about that, if you look at the, the plan currently, it reads as elected officials would be eligible by May first, so we'll see how that develops, I'm sure there'll be more details coming out as supply issues get resolved and as they develop those plans. The parks master plan draft is completed, it was sent to the technical advisory committee for review. I think that, that committee includes a parks board member, some parks board members, and I believe councillor Walker was on, on the tack too, so that coffee, copy is being reviewed for, you know, radical and make sure it's consistent with everything that they've been discussing, and they'll meet in a couple of weeks. And that would be something that we'll schedule for the council for your review, hopefully soon. An update on the vehicle registration fee, the county board postponed that policy work session until, I think it's tomorrow, March second. And I, I shared a draft of, or I shared the, the link to the drafted up staff memo on that, if you're interested in taking a look. Shelley Dennison reached out to councillors about clemery conversations, getting you involved very early in the process for scoping out the comprehensive plan. If you have the time, that'd be great to talk really generally about the comprehensive plan, the process and, and your vision for the update, which will be really just the start of this very long and important process and journey to, to update that. Upcoming schedule is busy, we do have a meeting next week and a meeting on the fifteenth. The May eighth city council meeting will start off with a work session on work sessions, and I think Jeff would probably send around an email asking if you had any topics that you would like to consider and talk about as a council at that work session, please send them, send them on over. I think we've captured a lot already in our notes, based on your conversations at goal setting and other things that are already sort of in the works, but anything that comes to mind, please let us know. With that, I'll hand it off back to the mayor, thank you.
Thank you, we're on the committee and councillor reports, we'll go ahead and start with councillor Hockinson.
Oh man, I'm emotionally drained, but guys, thank you for anyway, I do appreciate y'all, even if I don't always agree with y'all. And don't have a lot to report, so I think I'll just save my report for next time.
All right, thank you, sir, councillor Walker.
Thank you for everybody's patience, thank you for Shelley and Kelly putting together all the copious amounts of paperwork that they did to help us get through this, thank you, Chris, for your good legal advice. The, I, I am anxious to see kind of the, when are we going to see the goal setting stuff all written up?
That, that's coming out with a packet for the eighth, so there'll be a report on the goal script.
Right, I'm excited, um, he's told, you know, I'm the new library liaison, we haven't had a meeting yet, and I'm excited to meet those folks, they sound like a great bunch of folks, I was thrilled, like you said, everybody said they're opening up two hours from ten to twelve one day, two to four the next day, that's great to see our library opening again, the, the last thing I'll say is that the state legislature is, is taking testimony on a homeless bill called, I believe it's homeless bill, homeless bill, it's HB, HB thirty-one fifteen, and it would basically allow, from what I can tell, homeless camps in our, any public lands, including our parks and trails, if they were trying to get quote unquote warm and dry. It, it, it also says something about some objective things, but then it turns around and says that those objective criteria are, depend on the circumstance. And when I asked what that meant, they talked about it, it had to do with what the weather was and things like that, so it's it, it appears like it's a bill that you could drive a few log trucks through, there's so many loopholes, and, you know, what they do in Portland with how they handle the homeless is, you know, I'm not going to get, you know, weigh in on that, but when they start passing these bills that are going to affect how we can deal with things in our town, I'm very concerned, so I know we've got Rich's kind of the kind of lead person and Laurie's interested in that, you might want to consider testifying, the, the hearing is March ninth, it's coming right up. And, yeah, it's gonna, I think they're going to be trying to pass it pretty quick, and it would really change how we're able to deal with anything like that here in Sandy, so check it out, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Exner.
Yeah, a couple of things, one is Jordan, I've been seeing a lot of road issues around town, and actually, a couple, three of them have been some things that I brought up over the years, and I'm concerned, starting to see mud coming up through several pieces, Langensand, Pleasant, I'm seeing some things on Hood Street, where I'm starting to see mud coming through, there's been some junction that seemed to be permeable, that was that word? A long time without any fixes on them, and it just seems like they continue to be problems, and I hear them Wolf and twenty-six, Proctor and twenty-six, Pioneer and twenty-six, there's some real issues that need to be looked at over the somehow we need to figure out a way to solve them, they just seem to continue on to be a problem, so there's that, and then finally we disagreed pretty strongly tonight here. And I was on the losing, losing side, and I will tell you that I, I am a team player. We voted to agree to do something that I don't like, I am not going to be, you're not going to hear it from me that I will be dissing this one, I'm now the guy that's going to be helping this to go through, I want it to go through, I don't want it to hurt Sandy. I think it's important that we show a formal, complete front, and so I'm looking forward to making that happen, so you will not hear a diss from me, this is a, this is a process where this is how we deal with problems, I think, and we should do that as we go through these kind of things. And then finally, councillor Hockinson's got a aquatic meeting set up for us this week, look forward to that, okay?
That's great, councillor Sheldon.
Yeah, I want to echo what Carl, Carl said, I, I think we did disagree very strongly tonight. Frustrations came out and, and that, I just ask that you guys kind of bear with us, new ones, as we, there's, it's a learning curve, y'all have been there before, and just ask us to help us get through this and, and learn, and, and we're going to disagree, but conflict, quite honestly, is healthy, if people aren't conflicting a little bit, somebody's getting railroaded somewhere and someone's needs aren't getting met, so that's perfectly normal and natural, and I just hope that we can remain professional. Stan, when I, when I met with you one time, you know, one thing that stuck with me that you said was that, you know, everyone on this council has positive intent. And I truly mean that, and I, I see that and think that, even tonight in our disagreement, I think it's important to remember that I don't think anybody here was trying to, to, we were standing up for what we thought was right, and, and that, so thank you for that, and thank you for the disagreements, I'm sure we'll have many more, and I just ask and pray that, because that was some of my frustrations is is that we, we don't take it personal, that we just disagree and move on, so. The homeless thing, the homeless thing is that, especially the one over at Ruben, Kathleen, I haven't been designated as any homeless liaison or anything like that. I think Lori and I have expressed our passion for it and our desire to, to look into the issue and, and work something, so I would like to, at some point, again, the noon is here, not really sure how about it, but I, I would like us to consider looking forward to put together some kind of work group or group of, to collaborate and figure out how we can address these issues, because Kathleen is right, there is a bill working its way through the legislature. Has a lot of steam, there's, there's some case law that's not real favorable for, for law enforcement to take in the previous approach that was kind of relied on before, so it's time to get creative and, and implement some different different ways of looking at it and working with things like our parks board and, and ways that we can structure our city to to help alleviate some of those issues, so. That's all I really have, I've been designated as a planning commissioner liaison, and so I've been just trying to reach out to them and introduce myself and have some very general conversations and figure out that role there, so nothing really to report back though.
Thank you councillor, appreciate it, councillor Smallwood.
Rich, were you going to say something about Ruben Lane, you started to say something about Ruben Lane and?
You know, I just, you know, every day, I, I think because all the leaves are off the trees and, and the storm has probably cleared out some of it, it is, it is growing and it is very bad back in there, I'm not really sure who owns that property, I've been meaning to look into it and and see, I don't know if that's private or city, but I, I do know that that's the kind of stuff that I do believe that I, I see earnings on here, that I do believe code enforcement could deal with, because that's a definitely offensive literacy right there, but, but when it comes to where I was going with it overall was the collective piece. For so long, I think people have relied on police officers to, to deal with homeless and kind of keep them moving along, and, you know, if they don't, then take them to jail and alleviate the problem, and and quite, and that's just not the case, is able to do that anymore, and so while they do play an important role, I think building, again, working with our parks board, because Kathleen's right, there is parks areas, but there's things that if you look at what other cities have done to really, you know, structure their building and their concepts and, and what they plant and how they design to, to help alleviate some of those problems, and then building networks with resources outside the city, so I think we need to do that, and I would, I would propose, I don't know how we start that, what we do, I'm looking to your guys' guidance for that piece.
Thank you, councillor Smallwood.
Number four.
Thank you, councillor Pete's hole.
Yeah, thanks, I just want to thank everyone for tonight, we will disagree, we'll disagree in the future too, I think it was stated before, you know, coming out of this, I've done for the last, you know, fifteen years or whatever, you know, not take it personally, but just grow from it and understand each other a little bit more in where we're at, and and we don't have to agree in the future either, so I appreciate that aspect of our council, unlike some other councils out there, I would like to hang on to that aspect of our great city. Schools are opening, you may have had some students, I think maybe a few people on this call here have some students that have already started school or will start school soon, and so you can't see their faces under the pictures that their parents are posting, but they have big smiles, I hear, on that, and so that's good and exciting for them, and, and it's just an exciting time for our community, our families, for those that do want just an exciting time for our community, our families, for those that do want to go back in session there. Restaurants are opening a little bit more. And so that's nice to be able to get out there and, and be able to support our local restaurants in, in that. Our storm cleanup, I think I read in your staff report, Jordan, that we have set up, or maybe it's already passed from the storm cleanup to be able to, are we bringing our tree limbs and those type of things? Not that I have any, but just out there, the public and let everyone know on council, things that we've done in the past. Did I read that right? To bring down to public works like we've done in the past? Or is that something different this year?
Yep, we did it on Saturday. Yeah, we do have the chipper that is out there and available for borrowing now.
All right, thanks. I didn't have any personally, thank goodness for myself, but I know a lot of neighbors around me have. And I was going to bring up for the rest of the council, the city owns a chipper, thanks to Don Allen. If you've been around long to know Don Allen, he used to be on the council. He was very adamant, his passionate was the chipper. And, and so we even got a second chipper to replace the first chipper. And we joked that we'd name it Don Allen's chipper. But it was a great idea. And what a community we have that thought of that, brought it forward and an asset there that our public works does for living inside our city just makes our city great. So if people are out there trying to figure out how to get all those branches in that green bin, you can let them know that you can contact the city about having them come and set that chipper out right in front of their house and, and instruct them on how to use it safely. The last thing I have is about the semi trucks on Langasen and DeBarco. And I've brought this up before. Carl lives on one street. I live on the other. Stan lives like, you know, five houses down and, and Rich a few houses down. But it's kind of getting more and more. And so years ago, there was an incident that happened here on Langasen where a log truck was parked there and their brakes went out and ran while no one was around down into the intersection of that. I was on council, it's just down the street from here. You know, kind of freaking out because of all the kids that played around their runaway log truck that ran into some stuff. Now, just one incident, but then also we have a policy in our city that they're not supposed to be parked on local streets. Parking, they've been parked right up the street from Stan there all weekend long, a long big semi truck as well over here in front of, next to the Catholic church there on that road. And if you look at, is not designed to be able to handle all of that, that weight that those semi trucks have. And so they become this, you know, we see it throughout the week and, and days as well as just cutting corners. And so I've mentioned before, Jordan, sometimes it may be some signage and some other things to help mitigate that, you know, that semi truck traffic from twenty-six going through here is not something for local streets. It's not designed for it, the weight of it, but also for the safety of it. But then also just parking up and down our local streets where we had a long enough space to park a semi truck. I know out in front of those apartments down there, I'm sure everyone wished they could park their cars. So I don't know. And that's just an idea out there to bring it to your attention for that. But it's kind of getting, getting more and more. We used to patrol that more with the giving warnings and things like that, saying that, hey, this isn't a place to park your semi truck. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, I mean, we, we argued a little bit tonight. I, I argue with my family all the time and I love those people. So I mean, hopefully we can just, you know, I know we will, we'll just continue to move forward and, and take on these issues and all stand up for, you know, what we believe and, and talk to that. And, and then just move along to the next one. But I, I, I certainly hope you all know how much I respect all of you and, and, and your beliefs and your differences of opinion. So the topic, so we have this work session on work sessions coming up. Let's make it a pretty quick work session and try to get to the next topic. And I think we should be able to do that pretty easily by everybody just submitting their, their topics. I mean, homelessness, you know, traffic, whatever it may be. Three sixty-second Bell Street, getting an update on that, whatever it might be. I, I've already brainstormed some with Jordan and Jeff, but send those out. And I think they're going to overlap and, and we'll put them all up on the board and we'll, we'll be able to choose some pretty quickly. So let's get through that. Thank you to counselors who's jumped into your committee liaison assignments. You know, again, I view that as all of us working on the same team and then we individually send our champion, you know, on that issue out and, and to kind of lead the way. On that, I just, I don't want anyone to be surprised by this, but you know, I mean, these committee members, all these committees are approved by us as council, right? All these voting members that participate on these committees. And then, and then as mayor, we send a council liaison, you know, to be our liaison from our council and then sit down on this committee. And so I only say that to say that if you, everyone is invited, this goes without saying, attend every darn meeting in the city you want to attend. That's great. But if you're not a member of that committee or a liaison of the council, you will be participating as a citizen, as a, as a, as a neighbor. And so if there's a time to testify, please testify, all those kinds of things. But if you're not a city member or officially there's a liaison of our council, then you're there as a private citizen of our community. And again, I think it's great. I think that all of our counselors, if we have the ability, should get involved in our different things. But I just want to make sure that that process is clear. And then just the final thing is the facade improvement. And we have a lot of facade applications coming in, particularly with our, we need, we need to brand this. I, I don't even know what to call it, the cover, the gazebo, whatever it is. We got to figure out a name for it. But we're getting a lot of applications for it, which I think is very exciting. And you know, it means that it's something that's very needed and that people are excited about. And it could really be something that I think that our community is known for, quite honestly. So I think that's a real positive thing. And I'm looking forward to our staff presentations, like kind of how that, how that process worked out. With that, that's the end of my report. It's getting pretty late. I'll let us all get to bed. And thank you, everybody, for good conversations and discussion tonight and bringing your A games. So that'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
Bye.